I don't hear anything, so. Let's start. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting to order on June 10th, and it is presently 7:36. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We do.
Are you ready for that?
I am ready. Let me quickly throw this over here really quick.
We have a special surprise, everybody.
We do. If I can get my Zoom, Zoom self in here. Okay. Here we go. Share screen, and here we go.
Okay, good surprise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Oh, we can't hear it.
Yeah.
Oh, we can't hear it, though, Dr. Willet.
I'm trying to. Yeah, maybe I'll work that out for the next time, but the.
We'll just say while they are.
Say it along with them, shall we?
There we go. So our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And we will work on that, and we will get our little voices heard. The one thing I want to mention, too, is Rini had said, maybe we can do like a little art project contest so that they can kind of create like a little certificate. So once they do the Pledge of Allegiance, we can use whatever artwork the kids come up with and use it on their certificates. So that's still something to think about as well. Okay. So let's go to approval of the agenda. I know you had mentioned that maybe we will move the H4 and H5, bump those up just so that we can do our recognizations first.
Right.
Now we can continue on with the H1 and H3.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
Ash, you want me to make that motion?
Yes.
Christina Plord, I'd like to make a motion to move H4 and H5 under the superintendent's report up to H1 and H2.
Jacob Murray.
Any discussion? Anyone have anything? All those in favor, say aye, or if you oppose, say nay, or now my screen is all different, or you can abstain. Okay, so let's go to Jacob. Karen?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Christina Plord?
Aye.
Katie?
Hi.
I called you Katie because I had her on my list. And then Tony.
Aye.
Okay, so we will move those up as H1 and 2, and then just bump the other ones down with the 3, 4, and 5.
That's good. Thank you.
No problem. And we will jump next to the approval of minutes. We'll entertain a motion.
Christina Plord, to make a motion to approve the May 27, 2020 meeting minutes.
Jacob Murray, second.
Any discussion? Did anyone have anything? I need to get my little list of people back up so that if anyone. Now that everyone's hands are ready, so you guys should be up. Okay, so now that we have everyone, you can take your hands back down so that way I can make sure that everyone, if they have something to say, that they can say it. So does anyone have any corrections? Okay, we're good. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed can say nay, or you can abstain. Jacob?
Aye.
You keep on flipping the screen on me.
I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's coming back. It's coming back.
Sorry, did you say, you say me?
Yes.
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Oh, there it went again.
There it is.
Dana?
Aye.
I got Christina. Kate?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
And I'm sorry if I missed anyone because the screen was just flipping and flopping. So I think I got everyone. So the approval of minutes, everything passes. It will be as is. Let's go to public participation. There will be a two-minute time limit. And Tony, your timer will raise his hand and say that you have 30 seconds left within the two minutes. And then we will continue on. So if someone in the public would like to say. So let's start off with Mary Rose.
Hi, everybody. It's Mary Rose Duberick, 37, Ryan Road, and I'm Vice President of the TMSPTO. And actually, I just wanted to thank you, thank Karen, Dr. Willet and Tony. I just spent about an hour listening in on the Communications Subcommittee. And one of the items was reaching out to PTOs, and Karen was kind enough to reach out to us. So you can check that box. But moving forward, there was some great discussion on further collaboration with the PTOs, not just obviously TMS, but TEPTO and the high school booster. So as a parent and a PTO member, I'm looking forward to future collaboration with you guys. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mary. Would anyone else like to raise a hand for two minutes? And if you could, just state your name and address so that we have that. And it's *9 on the phone, not on the wrong. I always guess myself because, you know, phones do things. At this time, anyone else would like to have the two minutes? Nope. Okay. Let's move to correspondence, which Tony, you owe me one. Oh, Colleen has. What's, what, Colleen, Colleen?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm on a different computer. Colleen, you need a check to go Blueberry Hill. Now, I just wanted to say, since the end of the year is wrapping up, I just want to commend all the school staff, the superintendent, Board of Ed, and the entire community. It's been a rough several months, but we're at the end, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciated everybody. How was it?
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
See, Tony, you got an extra minute to get all your files in order.
Get all my ducks in a row, huh?
Yep. Okay, go ahead, Tony.
All right. Again, appreciate the chair for last time. My apologies for not having that, but this time. Got an email giving information on the coronavirus relief for schools. An email thanking the board and Dr. Willet for their efforts during these difficult times. Emails requesting that the high school find a safe way to have an in-person graduation. Emails discussing the one-to-one technology initiative from a health perspective. Email asking the board to be transparent and to focus on being clear in their actions and intentions. Email asking on the availability of the Chromebooks. Email thanking Dr. Willet for his efforts for the Talon and the community. Email from two former students discussing concerns of racism and talent and the training of the district staff. Email frustrated with the perceived lack of communication and coordination concerning end-of-the-year activities. Email offering face masks with school logos on them for fundraisers. And email from the town council chair discussing the possibility of an upcoming Pride proclamation. Yes, now is an upcoming. Email offered the possibility for joint efforts and requested a chat. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Tony. We can go to points of information. If any member has something they would like to say, if you could raise your hand, that would be great. Okay, and Colleen, if you could just take your hand back down. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Tony, go ahead.
Okay, so, and I guess, Dr. Willet and Ash, the question is for you on this, this last one, concerning the proclamation that the town council is going to give. And if I understand the email correctly, they were going to sign that proclamation and then give it to the teacher rep for the GSA. What is the process? When something like that happens, when the town wants to congratulate or offer a proclamation, what's the process in giving that to us? And how do we, as a board, maybe get involved where we can help or back that and lend our support?
That's a good question, Tony. I did respond, and I had sent them an email to Dr. Willet just to ask him what the legal protocol is, per se, because I wasn't sure what happens, how, what we need to do. So, Dr. Willet, I don't know if you would like to answer that, just because I wasn't sure what, like, if the board has a spot or not.
Right. We, you know, in terms of what they're doing for proclamations, the town in the meeting from the previous night has sort of changed or updated the way they do proclamations. So that's, that's one part of the conversation strictly regarding proclamations, which is something that we could probably talk about, you know, at length at some point. But, you know, I think ideally, we would have the council, you know, chair, reach out to the board chair, or reach out to the superintendent to discuss, to discuss the idea. I think that would be, that's a great way to do it, and then we can move forward as two, two, two joint, joint organizations or joint elected groups together. I think that's a wonderful way of doing it, and, you know, so insofar as anything happens that is something within the schools or even within the town. You know, if we wanted to, if we were going to do something town-side, I think it would be appropriate for me to reach out to the town manager and/or have the board chair and myself reach out to the council chair and the town manager. I think that's a great way to do it, and then we can proceed together as two elected bodies. I think that would be, that would be the, you know, ideal way and a really productive way of moving in the, you know, having things like that occur. And so on the, on the question of any kind of legality with respect to that, proclamation-wise, the council has decided how it wants to handle proclamations. I haven't gotten any kind of legal feedback yet about, about acceptance of such. The Board of Ed, you know, so, you know, with respect to what the Board of Ed accepts or doesn't, I didn't get an answer to, to that yet, but that wasn't a question specific to this situation. It was more just a general proclamation question that I'm getting a legal answer to.
So, if I may, Madam Chair, I guess, follow up on that. So in the case of this, this particular proclamation, is there something we, as a board, can do to, I don't know, add our excitement to it? Is there a way that we can get involved to say, yes, we support, or we agree? And I'm not articulating that well. I just, I think this is a great thing, and I'm wondering how we can help.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what, the, what, what the chairwoman was looking for with respect to how can we officially and legally acknowledge this, and that is the answer I'm trying to get. But, you know, you could also, as a board, simply also acknowledge this, you know, recognize the proclamation as well. That is something, as a board, you can, and obviously do, but I haven't received any official kind of legal response yet, but I'm looking.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Tony. Kate?
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to quickly address the board. At our last Board of Education meeting on 5/27/20, the Board of Ed took a vote on a recommendation for expenditures, and immediately after the vote, in a moment of frustration, I uttered the word shocker. I should not have said anything, and I would like to formally and publicly apologize for my utterance. I've spoken to the member of the Board of Education whose vote I was inappropriately commenting on, and I apologize personally. I believe that taking accountability for our missteps will help us to work better together. Every member of the Board of Education has his, her, or their right to vote in accordance with their conscience and in accordance with the will of the constituents. Again, I apologize to Talon.
Thank you. Thank you. Rini? Where's Rini on my little screen here? There she is.
Rini Beesaw, I just would like to thank Kate for that, and I agree with her that we all, you know, just be, want to work together, and to do that, we just have to be kind and do our best with each other. So thank you.
Perfect. I know emotions are very high right now. Everybody's, especially the end of the year with kids and, you know, going to the lockers and everything today, like yesterday. Just kind of sad, the whole thing. Anyone else? Are we good? Okay, let's go ahead. We are on to the Student Representatives Report for Fisher Thompson and Alexandria Acosta. If you guys could just raise your hand, you'll pop right up to the top.
Hello. Um, let's see if Alexandra's.
Yep, she's right next to it.
Okay, awesome.
It's the Brady Bunch.
Awesome. So we've got quite a few, you know how it gets towards the end of the school year. We've got quite a few things to, probably not as many, or actually, maybe more than we normally would have because of the virtual setting, but I'll try and get through it quickly with Alexandra. So first of all, just to cover it off, DECA elections and DECA elections were decided. Normally, it's the seniors in DECA who elect the next officers, and then awards were presented to outstanding members who just did great this year. The officers of DECA presented the awards safely with social distancing and made sure that nobody was harmed in the process. The Health Science Club elections also happened. Then, right after that, we're swinging into the week of June 1st. Dr. Willet, and of course, you, as the board, you took care of the seniors with the sweets for seniors. I know for myself, the cookies were very much appreciated, and as, as you pointed out, the tensions are high right now for literally everyone, and everyone enjoys a good cookie. So it's very much appreciated by everyone. Alexandra, I know you have.
Moving on to June 2nd, on Tuesday, we had an evening of excellence at the high school where awards were presented to high school students for a variety of things. And then on June 4th, we had the NHS virtual induction. There's 29 juniors and eight seniors newly inducted into NHS this year. Emily Bliss put together the video. It was really good. I think everyone really appreciated how her hard work on that, and I think it was a good substitute for in-person induction.
Yeah, it's, it's really just, especially, like she said, Emily's work on the video, when you put hard work in, you get good stuff out, and we're making the virtual climate work. Speaking of virtual Footloose. Yeah. Came out on, or rather, how should I say, the recording was published live, but not on YouTube. Saturday, June 6th, the link was sent to ticket holders and everyone involved with the show. It was filmed by the Bliss's, Emily's parents, and Mr. Fields. It was absolutely great. Again, we're, we're making the best out of a bad situation, best we can. Just really mainly for the public, the THS virtual graduation updates. Just if, in case they haven't heard, Friday, June 5th, was locker cleanout, gown and t-shirt pickup for the seniors. Monday, June 8th, was graduation portrait slash video and diploma cover pickup. We also got roses for that. That was awesome. Tuesday, June 9th, were the recordings of the speeches for graduation. Monday, June 15th, will be school book returns, and Thursday, June 18th, will be diploma, like actual diploma pickup and virtual graduation that, later that evening. Next, I think we've, we've got some stuff about student council.
So for student council, we have a series of donations we're making, and we are preparing to donate money to a fund for PPE for healthcare workers. And then we are also donating a gift card for food to Hartford Hospital. All of the money that we're donating has been raised through student council-sponsored events. And then the last Friday of NHS is the last class for the NHS Talent United program.
Yeah, I think Friday is, if I'm correct, I think it's at 2:00 PM. It's for all high school students. I think it's like a Harry Potter trivia, so that should be fun. Then NHS tutoring, just one more reminder, as we're heading into the home stretch of the year. It's still available for any student through June 18th. So in case anyone listening in is in need, we're there for you.
Thank you, guys. That was quite a bet.
Yep.
You know, and it was, I have to say, the virtual Footloose, I think it was that night that they had the family members go, that night that they recorded, because I was like, I remember that. So it was definitely nice to sit on our couch and just kind of have some popcorn while watching it, and it was great to even watch it a second time. So that was fantastic. And for graduation pictures, we were there, too. The, I have to say, the senior moms did a great job decorating the outside there for all the seniors. That was great.
Yeah, absolutely. It was, it was nice going. It was a bittersweet sort of going back to the school, bittersweet feeling. But again, just making the best that we can.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So let's go down to the superintendent's report, and if we kind of mixed everything up. So let's do the H1 for the recognition of, we'll have Dr. Willet.
Sure. So if you don't mind, can I, can we do H5? We'll do H5 first, then H4.
We kind of bumped them up, so the H1 became, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If you don't mind, just reversing those two, just.
Whatever that 4 and 5 became 1 and 2, I reordered, remembered it, so.
Perfect. All right, so I'm just, I'm going to recognize the, the students first. We have two students with us tonight virtually. You should be able to see the information that I put up. And typically, you know, in the non-virtual situation, we'd be able to give the young adults a little more recognition. So, you know, in the board's great, you know, great wisdom and efforts, we wanted to reach out and, and give these students virtual recognition. So we have these students with us today, I believe. Anna Klinowski. Anna is a quiet leader among her peers. She goes above and beyond the classroom in every way, and she's always assisting other kids, always helping them, always polite, always respectful, always excited to learn. She's kind. She's awesome. I mean, basically, if you looked in the Webster Dictionary, the definition of awesome would have a picture of Anna. She is just amazing and has demonstrated all of the core values throughout the entire year and well beyond, I'm sure. So just wanted to give props to Anna, and I'm looking for Anna here tonight in the system. Or in, is there's a.
I see her listed. She's on there.
Yeah. Anna, do you know how to raise your hand? Because if you do, we can just pop your picture. Oh, there she is. So congratulations to you, Anna. Congratulations to your parents. You're just amazing. Just amazing. All right, we're giving you virtual claps left and right. I don't know how to put up my clapping hands, but.
He seems to know.
So congratulations. Did you want to say anything? Anna, you don't have to. You don't have to. It's all, all about you. Did you want to?
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you so much.
You are so welcome. So thank you for being with us tonight, and thank you for just being the awesome self that you are, okay? So now we move on to Josh Reed. Josh is a future leader, demonstrating his leadership virtually everywhere and in the conferences that we have for students. Clearly somebody that you're going to be seeing, so, you know, look for him. The willingness to follow the rules and exceeding teacher expectations is a regular part of what Josh does. He's very, very caring and helpful, and always has this contagious enthusiasm that helps lift the spirits of everyone around him. A quiet, confident, young man, and we're just so lucky to have him as part of the Talon Public Schools. He demonstrates the core values of our school system, and he is one of the people that, you know, we can always rely on to lift the spirits of everyone and to keep things rolling. So Josh, I know you're here tonight somewhere again. I'm sorry, my screen, I'm going to find you. I know you're here somewhere.
You're too, so.
There, there he is. Josh, would you like to say anything to the, to the group?
Thank you so much. This is truly an honor.
That's great. Josh, the honor is all ours. We're very, very lucky to have, to have you be part of the school system. So thank you for, for being there.
A little round of applause for that.
Big round of applause, virtual clapping. If we had, we don't have the confetti app, but if we had the confetti app, we'd be blowing up the confetti there for both you and Anna, Josh. So thank you for coming tonight, and congratulations to both of you, and you should both feel very, very proud, very proud. All right, so also tonight with us, we are very fortunate to have our athletics director, athletic supervisor, Todd Zenzek. Todd is an amazing individual. Todd has been an asset to the school district for, for the, all the time that he's been here. He's been immensely helpful. If anybody recognizes the uplift programs, you got to give Todd the kudos for uplift. He's been one uplifting everyone with Lego competitions and virtual races that I didn't complete and all kinds of things that Mr. Zenzek has really put together and helped. But in, in addition to all that, he's received the honor of the Patsy Lemley Comer, Comerza. I'm not sure, Todd, how to say that, but Comerza's Outstanding New Athletic Administrator Award. Only one person, entire state gets this, and he is the person. So just wanted to give a special recognition tonight to Mr. Zenzek for all of his efforts and, and everything that he's been doing. He's just an amazing, amazing person, and just so lucky to have him with us. So congratulations, Mr. Zenzek, and, and thanks for being part of the team.
Thank you very much, while they appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, Todd.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Congratulations, Todd.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And here, there's also an attached CAAD letter to take a look at within the minutes. So, all right, so moving from the original H4, H5 down to H1, the BGP update. As you know, we have with us tonight Katie Murray. So thank you so much, Katie, for, for joining us. I'm officially asking you to unmute here.
Got it.
So Katie's joining us tonight at the request of the board. The board want, you know, I wanted to get a perspective and a few questions. So Katie, did you want to start off with any, any statements? I did, just for the board's edification, I, I did take and send Katie some of the questions that you had asked so that there's a context here, so she can, you know, speak to some of the things that you were asking through that online forum, but she's, you know, obviously here tonight, too, to help in any way. So Katie, did you want to say anything first?
Sure. I, I can give a quick update if you would like on the project. Just going through it really quick, the design of the new school is complete. It's approved by all. Everybody needs to approve it. And that, right now, this is phase three, which is interior, exterior, playscape, and landscaping. The final design phases are coming up late 2020, early 2021, and those include technology and what they call FFE. I'm learning lots of acronyms. It's really fun. FFE is furniture, fixture, and equipment. Right, yeah. So as everyone probably knows at this point, when we got the, when the project went out to bid for a number of different construction trades, and when the bid packages all came back in, the project was running over $46 million. So a lot of value engineering efforts were made to find savings, more savings in the school. We, we feel a bit like we've been doing value engineering since January, which isn't too far from the truth. But a lot of, a lot of review with the, the team has, we were able to find some savings. So right now, we made our final decisions as a building committee last Thursday, the last of the alternate lists to make changes to the construction documents. And the total project price that we're looking at right now is $45,872,804. I will note that that, the unsuitable soil on the site became a very large, unanticipated cost. I believe that it's been fully accounted for now, and the costs for unsuitable soils on this project are about $1.8 million. The state has been amazing with us, and the state is moving forward with a process to pick up 100% of the costs of unsuitable soil, but it's going to take a little bit of time. And we couldn't slow the project down because we still need to open the school next August. So in order to move forward, the building committee voted to defer a number of project elements. The largest deferment right now is the entire FFE and technology budget of more than $1.5 million. And then there were some other costs that were more minor that we were able to defer, so we will not be. So we will not be making any expenditures against those items. And we're hoping that the state comes back with legislative action in June or July. So we're, we're waiting for that. But the good news is in making that action where we are able to move forward with the project. So the construction is moving forward on schedule. I know I was at Birch Grove yesterday with my littlest kids, picking up stuff from the classrooms. And it was really exciting to see the steel framing going up on the site. Mr. Swanson especially was really excited about seeing some real progress there out his window. The underground utilities are being run into the new site and the footings and foundation walls are being finished up as we speak. And everything is still on schedule for substantial completion by August 23rd, 2021. And I did want to just note that we, the construction company, the construction management company has a lot of protocols in place, including some additional COVID-19 safety protocols that are required, obviously. But they, they have talked a lot about the safety measures that they are taking on the site to keep their construction crew healthy and safe while they're working, as well as anyone else who needs to be on site for inspections or any other reason people might, might need to be on site. So things are progressing nicely and safely. And I know Dr. Willet sent a few questions. Would you like me to start by just going through that list?
Go for it. And then if anyone else has anything extra, we can go from there.
Sure, absolutely. The first question I, I have here is about the wardrobe space. So one of the items that the building committee did not take any action on was potential cost savings to remove, one, what they, what they call a wardrobe. I sort of, from what I can see from the plans, I think it's more of a bookshelf, a deep bookshelf with doors on it. As you can imagine with this age group, there's safety concerns about having storage that is a bunch of shelves that might look an awful, awful enticing to young children, it's potential ladder. So a lot of these storage areas do have doors. That's sort of what I envision these wardrobes to be more like. The one cost-saving option was for us to remove one of the three closed bookshelves in the classrooms. And the building committee did not take any action on that item, so that is still in the project plans. We certainly heard from Dr. Willet. I know that a lot of the teachers, when they were first spoken with about, you know, their thoughts about a new school, the issue of storage always, always came up with the teachers. And so we, as a building committee, want to maintain as much storage as we possibly can for the teachers. Pete Staba, the facilities director, was incredibly helpful in giving us perspective on storage needs in that building and how the, the new design is, it's a little bit less storage than they had in the old building. So anything we can do to preserve as much storage is certainly something that was very thoughtfully considered. And so right now, we have not taken any action to remove those wardrobes. And we are, we do have an open communication request with the construction management to kind of get an idea on when we have to make a, a decision on whether the wardrobes will go in or not. Right now, they're in the shop drawing phase is what I, what, how it's been explained to me. So they're, they're taking the construction designs and detailed specifications that the millwork manufacturer needs. So we have a little bit of time before that decision needs to be made, but right now the wardrobes are all in. And I think the building committee all heard very clearly that the teachers are concerned about storage. So we want to try to move forward without removing them. Right now, based on the budget, we don't have to, but it's a construction project. So as we've been finding out, somewhat the hard way, things happen that are not, not expected. So it is a safety valve, but no action has been taken yet. So the, the issue with, the next question I had is about the unsuitable soil removal and whether the state articulated any particular reasons why they might not fund this unexpected cost. So just to clarify, the state has committed in writing to cover 89% of the unsuitable soil cost. The unsuitable soil cost is, is absolutely unexpected, but it is part of the project for this school. And it will be covered at 89%. However, in talking with the building committee, we articulated our concerns about being able to accomplish, you know, everything we wanted to with this school, keeping it under forty-six million dollars. With 1.8 million dollars of unsuitable soil was really more than the project could hold together. Something needed to give in that equation. So the state has been an amazing partner in this whole project. And they are moving forward with what they feel very confident about, getting the additional funding, the 11% that Talon would have to otherwise pay for unsuitable soil and to, to get that included in the school construction bond package. In speaking with Costa, who's the director of the office of school construction, he seemed very confident that this was gonna happen. But he could not commit to it until legislative action is taken. So we have to wait until the legislature acts. And as we all know, getting a group of people together all in one space is rather a challenge right now. So I know that the legislative leaders are working with the governor's office to figure out when special session is going to be called. But I think everyone's very optimistic that it's gonna happen either sometime later in June or in July. The next question I have is what planning was considered around 21st century learning and educational outcomes as part of interior spaces, makeup and layout of the building? So basically, the impact of school design on student learning. This, I think, the, the school design is driven by the educational specifications. And the educational specifications come from Superintendent Willet as well as the Board of Education. And these were finalized last summer, I believe, and submitted for all the reviews. I understand that the EdSpecs have to go through a lot of reviews, not only in the Office of School Construction, but also the Department of Education has to get involved here. So the, the design of the school is based on the EdSpecs. Also, Dr. Willet was very involved in giving input, answering a lot of questions, a lot of questions about, you know, preferences, ideas, different priorities in the school. And I know that the project design team also did interviews with the school staff before the school, the school year ended last school year. So around a year ago or so, the, the project team did speak extensively with the school staff. And I know that Mr. Swanson and Mrs. Gublieta from Birch Grove have also been very involved. In addition, as we have, as the building committee has been reviewing plans or was reviewing plans late last year and early into this year, the building committee has a retired teacher on the committee. There is another building committee member who is an educator. And Pete Staba is also a member of the building committee and Dr. Willet attends almost all our meetings. So I think that the, the educational priorities were present in, in every step of the way. And I know that I'm not an educator, but I think I can envision kids in this school. I think it's gonna be a really amazing place for them to learn. And I, I get really excited when I, when I talk about plans for the school. My kids have to listen to my excitement all the time, so they seem excited or they're faking it really well. They're eight, so it's hard to fake it, I guess. The next question is what aspects of the building did the committee take into consideration to keep the project within budget? And then how will those cuts impact the children, teachers, administrators, staff and superintendent? This is the balance, right? So in getting a project, a price back from the contractor that was above forty-six million dollars, the, somewhere we needed to figure out how to find a place to make cuts. And we needed to make sure that the building continued to meet the educational specifications and continue to meet the needs of our community and our, our, our kids. So when we started talking about cuts in the school, every, the, the first five or six rounds of V E stayed away from any potential educational impact. And the things were done like, I'm talking about earlier this spring, changes were made, for example, to some minor architectural elements were simplified. We cut the landscaping budget in half or so early this spring. So a lot of cuts were made in the first five rounds or so of V E that didn't impact educational spaces. This last round of educate, of, of cuts that we did, we actually finalized last week. Now we started to get into some of the educational impact. And Dr. Willet was incredibly helpful in giving his perspective when we were making these considerations. I know Pete Staba, although he's not directly an educator, he's certainly very vested in, in all the goals for the board. So we heard a lot from him on any concerns about educational impact. And when final decisions were made, I believe that those decisions were, we made decisions to stay away from things that might impact educational outcomes. For example, the building committee voted unanimously not to remove the partition between the cafeteria and the gymnasium. That was one of the items we were considering. And instead of making it an operable partition that could be opened or closed, we could save money by building a wall there instead. And the building committee voted unanimously not to do that, but to find savings and other things that wouldn't have direct educational impact. So I think that we continue to prioritize the, the educational priorities of the school. And I hope we did, because that was certainly something I personally wanted to see. And those were the types of questions that I was very interested in hearing the answers to. And then the last question I see here is many discussions have been taken, have taken place about the project being over budget. Do you expect it to come in on budget? And what steps are being taken to make sure the project doesn't go over? So this is, the budget is, has been a sticking point and it's a, it's a really big one, right? It's, you, you have to do the project on budget. That's, that's the task we were given. At this point, we voted tonight, the building committee actually voted tonight unanimously, as well as last week, we voted unanimously to approve what is termed the guaranteed maximum price. So the way this works is that the construction management came back with a price for us for every element of the, this phase of the project. We know how much the windows are gonna cost. We know how much the doors are going to cost. We know how much the sheet rock, the paint, the gymnasium floor, all of these elements have now been fully priced out. And we are under contract, per our vote tonight, for the contractor to deliver the items as built, to build the items as specified in the construction documents for the price that he has given us. I did speak with the town attorney at the request of the town manager yesterday about this. And, you know, it's a construction project, so yes, we are under contract for guaranteed maximum price. But to think that that's the end of any conversations about pricing is not really realistic. However, I do believe that this project will come in under budget. I think we have an amazing project team. Right now, this project is in the hands of D'Amato Construction and I wouldn't want it to be in anyone else's hands. The D'Amato Construction team has done an amazing job for Talon, first in the modular phase of the project and getting our kids a place to actually attend school this school year, as well as in this phase of the project. I, I believe that the project plans have been reviewed more than they would be on any other project because we've gone through so many rounds of value engineering. I believe this project will come in under budget or at or under forty-six million dollars. We have enough contingency room right now to do that. We have, we have a really good team working on it. And I, I do believe the project will come in at or under budget and meet the needs of our community, which is an awesome thing. So those were the only questions that Dr. Willet fed to me ahead of time.
Perfect, Katie. Thank you so much for everything. That was very thorough. We'll go ahead and start knocking off some of the hands that are raised and go from there. So Tony, got your hand up, little blue hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Katie, thank you for, for coming today. I sincerely hope we see a, a lot more of these updates. I appreciate the, the first-person perspective there. So I've paid attention to the last couple of your meetings, specifically since the budget came up and a lot of these questions as far as it being over budget and the, the nasty word of cuts being required. And to say that there are some passionate members on your, on your committee would be putting it lightly and that's certainly something that I, I'm, I'm very thankful for. I, I want to preface my question because I, I think you answered a lot of it and I don't want it to come across that I don't think you are doing it. I just, I want to understand a little bit more in, in how the sausage is made. So I spent some time reading the document that you referenced, the educational specifications that I think Dr. Willet and his staff put together about May of 2019. And then the letter that Dr. Willet sent Mr. Costa.
Nobody says the last name. Don't worry about it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Costa, that's the guy.
Well, the letter he sent Costa in June, that I think really expounded upon those educational specifications. And, you know, to the point you made just a bit ago, there's a lot there and, and there's a lot of criticality in that. My question is, what process are we using or how are you and your committee ensuring that as you have these discussions with cuts and with adjustments and these decisions are being made, that you're keeping in mind what they've put in these specifications and that the end goal will adhere to what we've said we need to have?
Sure. So I, the good news is that there are a lot of really knowledgeable and experienced experts involved in this process, to which I am eternally grateful for. The architectural firm that we have been using for this is J C J Architecture. And they have a lot of experience in building schools, in building schools in Connecticut. And our project, our specific project team there has also had a lot of firsthand experience in building schools in Connecticut. So they are familiar with the educational specification kind of template that the state requires Dr. Willet to use. And whenever I ask questions, they seem to be very fluent on the educational specs. So like a lot of elements in this project, we do rely heavily on our experts to ensure that we will build a building that meets all sorts of requirements, code requirements, but also educational requirements. In addition, you know, Dr. Willet is, probably gets more emails than he wants to about this project and phone calls and last minute, hey, Dr. Willet, we really need to talk to you about this one thing. So we do refer back to Dr. Willet a lot and the project team refers back to him to make sure that any potential changes will still meet the educational specifications and the needs of the district. So I think between those, you know, between the experts on the, the company that we've hired to meet our needs, as well as the in-town experts of Dr. Willet, Pete Staba, and then the building committee, which, which brings together a wide variety of different expertise. We are, there's a lot of eyes on checking things that come through to us.
Okay, okay. So just a, a quick follow-on and again, thank you. That's exactly the information I was, I was hoping to hear. But, and, and it's, I guess, the engineer and me from a project manager. But, and, and it's, I guess, the engineer in me from a project management perspective, are we documenting those concerns and I guess the ultimate solutions that come out of there? I noticed in one of the meetings, forgive me, I don't have that note here, but where Mr. Loubo was asking about a conversation and who was in the room. Are those kind of notes kept in, I don't know, archived in, in such a way that if we end up with a problem, we can point back?
So I know beyond, you know, the building committee meetings, there are tons of meetings that go on for this project. Things that are actual, things that actually are changed in the spec, in the, the building documents, like the construction documents. When we make a change to the construction documents, those, those changes are fully documented so that there is some sort of a log that the architectural firm keeps about changes. I don't know that every phone call conversation gets documented. I, I don't know if that happens. My best guess is, is no, that the iterative and collaborative conversations that happen don't all get documented. But there are a lot of meetings in, involved in this project that do. So there's construction meetings that happen on site on a very regular basis. I think they're happening either weekly or bi-weekly. Those are documented. There are minutes involved in those. I know that during the design phase of this project, there was a lot of meetings between the state and the architectural firm and all of their subcontractors for engineering and, and other items, as well as the construction firm. There were regular meetings held with those groups. There are documented minutes kept for those meetings as well.
And are those minutes, the, the minutes and stuff that do exist, are those readily available for the building committee members to review?
We've been offered them before. As far as I know, I might be the only one who's taken them up on that. I, I've, and I haven't looked at them all. I, I look at a few when I had a specific question about something, but I haven't looked at them all. Can only do so much, but they have been made available to us. Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I'm good.
I think you're muted, Ashley.
I, I am muted because I was sneezing again with the allergies and the treat. I'm not good, so don't mind me, but Jacob, you're good to go.
Thank you. And thank you, Katie, for coming here tonight to give us a thorough update. So I just had a couple of follow-ups to the questions I had asked. So for the cabinet space, the storage space, I just wanted to see if I understand it correctly. So you're saying if we took out these cabinets, there would be a little less storage space up in the new building than there was up in the old building? Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the old building had what the architects tell me was an extraordinary amount of storage. They were very surprised when they did tours of the old building with how much storage it had. The design for this project calls for less storage. We've already done some reduction in storage from what was there in the old building. Right now, in our last, in our meeting last week, we did take out one storage area in every classroom. And that was some very high cabinets above the kids' cubbies. The state of Connecticut on further review did notify us that those storage cabinets would not be eligible for reimbursement, that they're a safety concern for the state because you have to get up on some sort of a stool or chair or something to access those spaces. And that's not something that meets their, their safety requirements or something. So we did take out that storage in every classroom. I'm pretty short myself, so the idea of having storage up that high was like, I mean, I have those cabinets at my house that I don't really use. So I, I kind of thought that that storage removal seemed very reasonable. And also the state wasn't going to reimburse us for it. So it was a pretty easy thing. I think everyone unanimously decided to take that storage out. One additional option that we have is to remove one of the three, what they term wardrobe closet cabinet spaces in the rooms. And right now we've cabled that. But it is an option that, like a safety valve. If we need to find more cost savings, that is one option that we could call upon in the future, you know, over the next couple of months, if we need to save the month, if we need to save some more money. But right now, we're moving forward, assuming those cabinets will go in as specified.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the way that the design is being presented, that if you did have to take some of those things out, it would be possible to put it back in in the future, you know, several years down the road, maybe when the town is in less of a financial hiccup? I'm just curious if there's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Certainly, that was something we discussed, although the, the state is very quick to point out that right now we have an eighty-nine percent reimbursement rate on all items, you know, like that in our school. So we would never be able to replace those items at, like the storage, at the current cost by including them in this project.
Yeah. Just to add to that, the bugaboo is that like, if you, if you could do it for forty thousand normally, you know, just using a number, we pay four thousand. You know, like we pay a tiny amount for certain things that we would have to pay an exponentially larger amount for later. So as long as it can come in under budget, it makes sense to, to do this, to do as many things as we can right now because we probably won't get the opportunity to do it again.
Yeah. And, and just, I'm not, I'm not saying that I, I think you should take them out. I think that's a very valid point that they need the storage space. I was just curious, you know, worst case scenario, if it's possible to have that stuff put back in, you know, so you're not like just totally closing off that road. And I, and the second question was, is just again, another clarification about the funding question. So Mr. Costa seems pretty confident that the state will do it, but he hasn't articulated any particular reason. It's just kind of from past experience that it looks like they'll probably improve it, is that the gist?
So the, the way I understand this works is that the school construction bonding bill, the projects that are put in that bill.
Yeah.
Costa puts them in. So I think that's why you feel so confident, that his job is to prioritize projects and to ask the legislature for the appropriate funding for those things. So if he says he's going to put it in, there's a very, very high likelihood that we would get that fund.
Okay. So he basically writes the bill. Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep.
And I yield the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Let's go to Kate. Kate, I think you're muted, Kate. No, you're not. We can't hear you though, Kate.
Yeah, you might maybe unplug and replug it in, Kate.
Nothing. I'm going to come back to you. You're going to figure out the headset. All these headsets are such issues, you know? Okay, let's go to Christine.
Wait, can't you just mime it? Wouldn't that be fun to mime it?
Thanks, Ashley. Thank you, Katie. This actually has been great. I really appreciate you doing this update. I, I was on a couple of the committee meeting calls and there's a lot of technical talk and stuff. So this was, this was really great. So I appreciate that. I just had a question about the portables. Are we still completely good to go with those? Are there any unexpected costs? And if there are, do we have to worry about whether the state's going to cover them a hundred percent? Are we pretty confident that anything that comes up, they will cover them?
So the, the portables were divided into a separate project and the building committee's involvement with the portables was relatively minor. But so I can speak to a few issues about that, but I, I hope I can answer your questions. But if I can't, I can find the answers. So right now, the portables are, we have a hundred percent reimbursement for the portables, that phase of the project. The reimbursement covers the, the setup of these things, the construction-related costs of the portables, as well as the rental of the portables through next August. If we did have to extend the lease on those portables past August, Costa has made it very clear that if that delay is due to something on Talend's end, then we would not be eligible for reimbursement of any dollars after, to, to continue the lease after August. And, you know, the rough estimation for leasing the portables and providing the, I don't know, like the services to them is approximately a hundred thousand dollars a month. So that's part of the, the motivation to the building committee and the project team to get everything squared away on the project so that we, we don't get caught with a bill that becomes very large every month. I know that, I, I believe that the portable project has been fully billed, if that makes sense, that the town has received all the bills for that project and has submitted for reimbursement. I think that last, I got the update, there were a few minor expenses that we hadn't heard back from the state on. As far as I know, we still haven't heard back from the state on a few of those things. But I can check and, and see if we have a status update. Right now, I don't think we do. I will also say that the project includes a, a holdback or a pot of money that will be used to disassemble the modular, the modular units and to reclaim that field. And so that is all already accounted for in the project. And I don't honestly know where that money like sits. I don't know if it's held at the state end or the town end, but there is money held to take those things down and to reclaim the field.
Can I make a quick comment to Katie, just for a minute? One of the things that's going to be a challenge as we get to the end is we literally have a move-in date of August twenty-third, I believe. And to execute that, everything has to happen on, like right on schedule. And it has to happen in ways that we have to be extremely flexible. And to compliment Katie and the committee and to compliment Pete, when we pulled out of that building, Pete had the flexibility to execute things within hours, get teams on hand to do things and get people and things moved that required us to be able to expend rapidly and to get things done so that we didn't end up burning a ton of unnecessary resources and money in ways that, you know, would be emergency afterwards. And so, you know, we're going to need to be able to do that when we get to this coming summer. If we can't, we are going to have a lot of problems. Those, those portables would be very expensive for us to stay in. So we just need to keep in mind that we have to have a high level of flexibility. Some dollars got moved over to the town side or are proposed to be moved over, which we'll talk about later. It's extremely important we have access to those dollars very quickly so that we can execute the things that need to get executed, or it could have a really negative side effect. So that's an important piece of this as we come into the end of the project in August.
And Dr. Willett, so maybe this is a question for you and maybe it's for later in the budget. But do we have, you know, if we don't get approval for any additional portable expenses by the state, so therefore we would be required to pay for them? You know, do we have anything kind of, do we have something put aside? Or have we, you know, built that into our budget somewhere for the portables?
Well, I mean, that's, correct me, Kate, is that like a hundred grand a month roughly?
Yeah, that's the, it's the direct lease costs are in the mid-eighties, mid-eighty thousands plus. There's a maintenance cost and then all the utilities. It's about a hundred grand a month.
It would be a tragic situation to have to do that because we would have to use our E R F money under capital, which we need for other things.
I think I'm thinking more of not necessarily the overage, but just anything else that comes up over the next year. So not so much that we don't get into the new building on time and we have to, you know, that would be a nightmare if we had to deal with renting the portables ourselves. Just kind of any other possible expenses that the state might not cover.
So when we get to the end of this fiscal year, actually, we'll be, what we'll be planning for next fiscal year is a lot of the traditional standard expenses that having a building would have as a part of them and would likely include elements like that for Birch Grove as we moved into that new fiscal year. Because keep in mind that we'll be entering a new fiscal year at that point. August twenty-third, we'll be entering that new fiscal year, not this one coming, but then, you know, but the next. So, you know, the, the comments about the, the money that would be part of the Birch Grove project that was what Pete Staba had, in his great wisdom, scheduled for, was never going to be maybe just one-off money. The, those funds would probably be things that we would need into the next fiscal year as well. So they, they're not really one-off. They're, they're really a very excellent planning, you know, activity or a very good plan that Pete Staba had made to have those money set aside. Because A, we would probably need some of them this year, which we'll see as we move forward. They'll be on the town side at this point. But in the next fiscal year, we will likely need some of those contingency monies as well for a variety of things as we are in August of that year, making adjustments to get, you know, fully into that new building. So it will be something that would have been part of both budgets and needed to be part of both budgets.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Katie.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, let's go back to Kate. Let's give this another shot.
Maybe it's working. Yes. Okay, cool. Yeah, I turned it off here at my cord. So that's why. Anyway, sorry about that. Thanks for coming back to me. First, Ms. Murray, I'd like to really just really honor the work that you've put in. I almost feel like this is your fourth child. Maybe not. Maybe that's a little overstatement. But I would like to put it in the board's, just on the board's consciousness to consider commemorating the efforts of the Birch Grove committees, particularly our chairperson, Katie Murray. Maybe at some point, you know, when we're further down the, the building, when we're closer to opening, we might, you know, name a wing after her or some such thing. Yes. So anyway, I just would like to put that out there as something because I do know and I do recognize the very hard work that, that you and the committee is putting in and the work Dr. Willett's putting in and really the scrutiny. You know, I think this is a really great opportunity for us to, to embrace a brand-new community building. You know, it's not just a school, it's also a community building. So anyway, I really appreciate everything. I do think that we should think about a formal commemoration, and that's really for the rest of the board that we might consider at a later time. So that's really all I had to say. Thanks so much.
Hey, thanks, Kate. Let's go to Karen.
Yes, thanks. Hi, Katie. Thank you so much for this update tonight. I was just curious about when the building comes to fruition or before that, since it's going to be a little crazy getting in there next August, what some kind of tour might look like of the bill, of the new building.
Yeah, I know sometimes I forget how entrenched in this project I become. In my head, I have this great vision of, of what it's going to look like. But nobody else wants to spend the kind of time it took to build that in my head. So I think we're going to be able to offer the community sometime in the next couple of months a virtual tour of the new building, which I'm really excited about. The architect has some, the architect has the ability to make the two-dimensional black and white construct, boring construction documents, the thousands of pages of them sort of come to life with a few key views of the, of the school. So it's not going to be quite like flying through every room and being able to do a three-hundred-sixty-degree view of what it will look like. If we wanted to do something like that, it would cost money and we don't have any extra money. So, and then we won't want to spend the money on the building, not just being able to look at it. So I do think we're going to get some pictures, some really good renderings of what the school will look like. The architect will be able to kind of give us a virtual tour of the new building. And I'm and I'm hoping for that to happen this summer. And it'll happen at a building committee meeting. So when I know when that's going to happen, I will send a note to the board to let you know. My hope is to record that as well and ask Dr. Willitt to put it up on the Birch Grove Primary Project website so that if anybody wasn't able to attend that particular building committee meeting, that we could have an online recording of the architect walking us through the building. And I think when, when everyone has the, the tools to be able to see it as it, as I see it in my head, I think everyone's going to be really excited about the school. It looks amazing and I think we're all going to be incredibly pleased with what we're getting out of this project.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, and I do see Tony, is that a new hand up, Tony, or is that an old one?
Nope, it's a new hand.
Oh, new hand. There we go.
I, I just wanted to follow up with Dr. Willitt on a, except he's like not in his seat, but when he was.
There he is.
There we go.
Sorry, there's, there's like bees, a couple of bees. We're having a bee problem here and I'm just having to take care of it.
I'll, I'll call them home.
I'm not sure why, but there's some that are making this room their home at the moment. So anyway, I'm sorry.
Quick question for you, sir. I wanted, wanted to go back to what you were saying just a little bit ago about the necessity of having the funds readily available to be able to make flexible, the, the flexible moves necessary to get into that building quickly, similar to what you had to do to get out of. And I'm assuming that there's a whole lot of planning going on now a, as far as trying to put some of those things in place where you don't have to make those rapid decisions. Could we get an update on that planning process at some point?
Yeah, of course. And, and I can give, I mean, I can give as frequent updates as the board desires on these things. So what I've found is that there are so many moving parts and so many parties working on the various aspects of this that from time to time surprises, you know, come up, operational things come up. And whereas one person or group might have a barrier, another person or a group might not. And so for instance, you know, there were some, some, you know, some challenges to getting certain, moving people in certain places. And because we had the flexibility to, to do that with, and Pete had the wisdom to, the wisdom and the wherewithal, we were able to get six guys, six people to work with us to get something done that otherwise wouldn't have been. And it was as a, it was as an opportunity arose, you know, a challenge arose in a very short span of time that we needed to overcome. And he was able to execute that because he was, had the flexibility. We didn't know it would be a challenge up until a week before, you know. So some of these things are operational. They come up and there are things we have to solve on the fly. And that's what those funds are largely about, are either things that we know are on the radar, but also things that are miscellaneous and that come up out of nowhere. Certain complications have arisen, but if we can't execute this, we're the ones that get hurt. So just like at the beginning of this year, if we couldn't get that stuff done from moving certain things to certain places, playing a, you know, we couldn't get that done, we couldn't open school. We couldn't get people in place. So, you know, that's the kind of thing that we may not know everything that we, I, I'll tell you right now, I guarantee you, we will not know everything that we are going to encounter as we enter the summer, this coming, not this summer we're in now or coming into now, but next summer. We're going to need that flexibility and, and certainly we're going to need to have some funds budgeted for it. So when we're doing fiscal year 22, we're still going to have to put in some miscellaneous sort of BGP funds to make adjustments so that we can make sure we start school on schedule and make sure that we're not dropping 100,000 to stay in portables per month.
No, I completely agree. I just, I know that the only way to mitigate and to lessen the impact and the need of those rapid response funds is to get as much of it behind us now to do as much of the planning as we can. And to, to your point, you're never going to get it all. It's going to be ask them total, but the closer we get, the better we are because there, there's just not going to be that pot of gold at the end of the run. But we've got to figure out how we do that early. I, I have the utmost faith that you and your staff are in front of it and just at some point, like a peek behind the curtain on that.
Sure, sure. And, and as you said, it's all about planning. We know there's no pot of gold, so we've got to put some money in the budgets to make sure that we, we, we're not looking for that pot of gold, you know? Because you're right, it's not there.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And one, one other thing I, I would just like to put in that I thought was really interesting to learn is that Pete Staba is attending the bi-weekly construction update meetings. So he is aware of the construction progression on the site. I fully anticipate that next year, as the construction moves from the, the framing, which is what's happening now, to, you know, the inside finishes, that Pete's going to be in that building on a very regular basis. And watching him work as part of this committee has been amazing. And I, I would just like to say that he's an amazing resource. He is definitely, he has his eye on so many different things. And I think he is as involved as he possibly could be to watch any potential problems get addressed as soon as possible. I mean, he has a great relationship with the construction team as well. So he has the ears of someone who, you know, is carrying around the hammers and nails, so to speak, on the site. So I, I for one have a lot of confidence in Pete's ability to be very proactive and he has the means and the opportunity to do that.
True. I, I 100% agree with that.
Well, thank you so much, Katie, for coming out. And I know that you guys have a lot of stuff going on, but this was good to take a little, you know, dig a little bit deeper on everything. And so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
So Dr. Willitt, if we could, we can go on to the monthly financial report.
Okay, so as you know, you know, every first meeting in the month, we have the standard monthly financial report. This month does tie a bit into our efforts as we look forward to next year. So the document that I'll be talking about next has relevance in connection to this document and to the document that we have for these standard spreadsheet that we, we have as part of these reports. The most important part right now is that the budget balance is about 1.2 million, specifically 1,227,769 as of the running of this report. This is about the May balance or end of May balance. The information I'm providing tonight will have a balance that is as of June 9th, 8th or 9th. So, but it has, it has fluctuated in that time, but it landed closer to this number again. So there's a number of aspects of this that are important to take note of. We have, for all intents and purposes, frozen the budget. So there are a number of things that we are deliberately not spending so that we can follow through with the phase plan that I had been presenting over the last month to the Board of Education. So as I transition, I'll be transitioning to the next document to give you more of a rundown on the specific situation. But just some highlights from this budget, as I typically do. Salaries are under budget because we've pretty much put, you know, freeze on some of the additional hiring. We have to hire certain positions, but we're trying to get to the end of the year without them to save as much money as we can so that we can transition that money over as, as discussed, as part of the recommendations in the phase documents. So some positions have deliberately not, you know, benfield or have an LTS, which is a lower expense. And those include also positions for people that have gone on maternity and military leave. We've been trying to work through certain situations so that we can hold on to as much fundage as we come into the end of the year as we possibly can. This also includes certain things like the nurse and, and some other savings as we've gone through this fiscal year, coming into the end and, and part of, you know, part of the efforts to, to have as much as we can. Substitute expenses are 185,000 under budget. Actually, I'll transition to this right now. So substitute expenses are 185 under budget. We did not do the trainings that we were going to do in some cases. We have not used the substitutes that we would have used. So there's going to be some funds there. Overtime expenses are over budget because where we have utilized staff to handle things, we're paying them overtime for those purposes. Stipends are slightly over budget because parent and guardians who paid for spring sports for PDP have a pay-to-play, have been reimbursed and spring sports and conferences have been removed. So, you know, that was going to be coming and it's landed. We are also going to see it, we get to the end of this year, some impacts of people who are retiring. There are some contractual obligations. So I do expect a fluctuation in the severance line as we enter the final report for June. We are going to have some severance funds that we are going to have to pay out to, to staff that are leaving the district. And that is going to, is going to impact the final phase document. But it'll impact it to the tune of, at max, maybe in the 80 to 100,000 dollar zone for everything. But it is going to have an impact. So I'll, that's why I say that, you know, while I give you those figures, they can fluctuate up and down. I do expect them to stay in the general range because there are areas we're saving on too. But that is the kind of thing that would impact it in a downward direction. Retirements, course reversements and that kind of thing. There could be a surge in some unemployment expenses, but I doubt that right now. I think we're looking at what we're, we're looking at, you know, for the next 20 days or so. We do have the benefits consultant is over, which we talked about during the timing of the switch from Milliman to Lockton. Legal and tech expense, we have been using S and G for negotiations and special education hearings and transportation contracts and COVID-related matters. And, you know, union MOUs as we had to make an adjustment to continuity, continuity of learning. So there were many, many more legal expenses this year. Probably will have similar things as we enter next year. So, you know, this particular line is over and probably going to be looking at something similar next year as we go through the, the year and have to, you know, go through some more adjustments with respect to how we're going to handle things and how the state, how the state lays out its guidelines and requirements will have a great impact on all school systems with respect to the adjustments that have to be made. So that's a line that, you know, will probably be in some flux as we go into the next fiscal year as well. Repair, maintenance, custodial, cleaning and, and those types of expenses are cyclical. You know, we have made adjustments and the board has, in its wisdom, gone with recommendation for theirs. So we're going to have units that will help us do cleaning more efficiently in many ways. But because of the nature of next year, I do expect that, you know, we're going to have to be making adjustments for COVID-19. And, you know, that'll be part of perhaps some reimbursement we might be able to get to. Tuition is under budget and will remain under budget. We have done some negotiations and talked with certain groups. So we have received both excess cost payments. The first was 723, then the last was 129. We do expect this to be under budget, which is going to contribute to funds that we have available at the end of the year. Similarly, transportation, we have just finalized the negotiations, contracts with them. We're under budget by about 129. That contributes to our end-of-year balance that we will also have, which is part of my next presentation to the board. So we've been in a, in a pretty favorable situation with respect to some of that. Special education routing is still, you know, something that we have to keep a close eye on as we get through the remainder of the year because there can always be a fluctuation. But I do expect us to end the year in favorable positions relative to many of these things, which is why I think it'll offset some of the things that we will be incurring, which is the whole point of the plans that we've been talking about with the phases. Energy expenses, as you know, were transferred at the beginning with Yusef, the utility internal service fund. And textbooks slightly over because some of the, the items that we had planned on actually had an increased cost to them. Supervisors are working with me closely on that. And things like instructional supplies and miscellaneous equipment and those types of things are under budget because we have been specifically not spending in certain areas. Required almost, you know, most items to come straight through me. So we've been regulating what is spent very, very carefully so that we would be able to execute the phase document that we've been discussing for the month of May. So that's the next thing that I'll be talking about is how that all pans out in terms of the EOI and how we're coming into the end of the year.
Okay, perfect. At this time, we can go through any questions that someone, anyone has. And I see Jacob has his hand up, so we'll go to Jacob. Jacob, you're muted.
Yes, thanks. So a couple of things. I noticed on this budget sheet, there are several categories that have like zero dollars across the row. And I didn't notice them up on the previous lines, like the miscellaneous expense and community conversations award up on the bottom. And I was just wondering, is that, you know, what's going on with that?
It may be that these made it into the run and usually zero items don't make it into the run. So I, I just have to check as to, you know, how that and why it made it into the run. But we do have, you know, we have, I have, and I'm just taking a conjecture on the community conversations piece. I've received grant money and things to pay for certain things that used to be something that came out of the budget, but now we pay for through certain grants and other things that we've received. So, you know, some things are zeroed out, but just never deleted because you never delete something from the system because if you look back years back, sometimes it'll mess up the records. So those might have just gotten in as a function of something that accidentally got part of the report, even though it was zeroed out.
Okay, okay. And just one other thing about the transportation contract. Is that, I know there are just a couple of things in my mind. I remember at the first meeting we did, we I did a straw poll to have you renegotiate that contract. And then also you were going to talk to them about trying to get some costs removed because of COVID usage. Is that, are you referring to like the contract being renegotiated or are those the same thing?
So there, there, it's more along the lines of the end-of-year renegotiation of our, of our terms to save some money and to pay what only is necessary from state and, and law. So when you did the straw poll, you did the straw poll to go, to go with the new, the new contract for three years. So that was negotiated at that time and executed. But the money that we're saving right now is a function of things that we did not have to do mostly. You know, things that we, we agreed that we are not going to pay for. The state required that we pay for some things and there are other things that we, in my opinion, don't have to pay for. And that's, that landed that way in our favor. So we have a good working relationship with first student. It's been a very good and productive situation. And, you know, it's good that we're ending in this way.
Okay, thank you. And that's it.
Okay, perfect. Does anyone else at this time have any questions? Griffin?
I just had a quick question. So just regarding the buses, Walt, so basically the month of June, so we still owe them $924,000 just for June? Or that's encumbered still?
No, the, yeah, it would be encumbered. I think the, if I have to look at this. Yeah, I mean, we're still, we, we contractually pay a certain amount and we have to fulfill our agreed contractual payments to them. But we should come out to the positive by over 100 some odd thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's pretty typical that we pay like a good chunk of the entire year, the last month of the fiscal year?
Yeah, I'd have to check with Mark, but my recollection is that we pay in a quarterly chunks.
Okay.
You know, and so big chunks do come out at certain iterations.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, let's go to Kate.
Hello. Just wanted to quickly comment on transportation and the costs. And I would just say that in my experience with crack, like that is, that is the, the case. It's all, it seems kind of silly, like just from a practical standpoint, to be paying people to not transport kids. But because it is part of a contract, because of all the, all of the other things that are associated, you know, we're, we're doing the same thing at crack. Like we still are paying our contracts. I just wanted to put that out there that that's just the situation. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. Anyone else? No? Okay, well then we will go to the budget update, Dr. Will.
Okay, so this is the most updated version. There was a version put in the board packet. I will post this updated version online publicly, but it goes to the board first. The one that's in the board packet is as of five days ago. The one that was handed out or posted or posted yesterday to board was the one updated after the town council meeting. And the one updated this afternoon was updated because I got some P P E figures that I wanted to include. So, so just to walk through this bit. Right now, this is updated through six eight with most of these figures after the town council meeting. The bubble of the budget that you put forward as a one point five four was forty million, five ninety four oh eight. The town council reduction is five eighteen, one eighteen minus the capital projects that we took off the table, which ended up being four seventy-three, one one eight. Town council two nights ago moved Birch Grove, some of the expenses that are illustrated here over to town side and then implemented a hundred thousand dollar reduction in the budget as a result. And so the ending budget for the Board of Ed was forty million, seventeen thousand, two ninety, representing a forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollar increase or a zero point one. So not a one percent, but a zero point one percent. So if you take the differential between the ninety-six oh three oh and the four seventy-three, what we have to find an end of year expense would be four seven seven oh eight eight. This is pretty much what you've seen before, a little asterix in that these, these projects may be projects that are of the same price, but are not necessarily these. I was just talking today. Facilities wise, but there would be, there would be projects that we would similarly mitigate fiscal year twenty-one funds with. It's just conversations I'm having with facilities to make sure that, you know, that what we're doing here is the best thing. But either way, it would be in that same, that same amount of money. So the offset would be the same, which is about three eighty-seven, three forty-six. We would be using medical prepayment about eighty-nine, seven forty-one, which would reach, help us reach the four seven seven oh eight eight figure. And that would be part of our strategy. The impacts to consider for fiscal year twenty-two or one forty-seven or twenty-nine, something, you know, these things that we would have to climb back up to once we get to that point. And again, the discussion of advantages and disadvantages. This recommendation three was, I think, four last time when I reorganized it, but you, a board have already have approved this. So these numbers fluctuate slightly, like curriculum slightly, but will be about seventy-five thousand, four hundred. And that chunk has already been approved and we are in the process of, of securing those items, which is very, very helpful. Facilities is very happy to be receiving the Clorox three sixty units. And we're able to move forward in a number of ways because of that. So much thanks to you from many parties for having done that as a board. Recommendation four, I had a genuity in there prior. I added P P E because you know, I was talking to certain members of the state and we were doing some pricing on this. So we may need some P P E for next year and we can pre-purchase this or rather mitigate fiscal year twenty-one with some, sorry, just, yeah, with some of these expenses. And this would help put us in a position with reusable items that we would be able to distribute in preparation for what we might have as an impact for next year. So those two figures together end up being sixty-eight oh thirty-two. And then recommendation five is changed into a new kind of approach to this. Because as we come into the next 20 days and, you know, within those next 20 days, we really only have twelve, twelve business, well, fourteen, if we counted, you know, tomorrow and the next day, we have fourteen business days. So no, we getting to an exact figure in that time, I didn't want to, you know, to, I wanted to give another way of doing this. So looking at recommendation five, because there'll be some fluctuations as we get to the end, I recommend doing a percentage split. Now, all of the funds at the end of the year that are not spent ultimately become the town's domain. But you can ask the town to do this kind of split on it. And based on what they were talking about in the town council meeting, it sounds to me like they're amenable to such a, such a thing. So these are three places that this split could be, and I use the term thirty, forty, thirty, that the remaining funds after recommendations one through four are expended, the remaining funds, in this case, six forty-two, five fifty-three. And again, if you're adding up things along the way, there might be a dollar indifference in one way or another because of the rounding of the cents, you know, and so on. But roughly six forty-two, five fifty-three, a thirty, forty, thirty split would mean thirty percent of that going to the E R F as a request to be transferred there, which would be ultimately fulfilled under, it should the town council agree with that under ordinance eighty-six, chapter eight. And the third quarter would be transferred into the E R F fund. So thirty percent of that, looking at the next section would be roughly one ninety-two, seven sixty-five. And then forty percent requested to be put into a COVID pandemic account, which would need to be created. Because this would require a discussion about ordinance and possibly probably two meetings to execute. When you request this or if you should request this of the town, which again, based on the town council's meeting, they would be amenable to this. It would probably not be until August that this could actually be created in the ordinance because it would require the month of July for the presentation and the second meeting on it. So the, the request would be made at the end of the fiscal year for the board, but it couldn't really be fully executed until maybe August or September in terms of any meaningful re, you know, label on it on the town side. So in that time, it would be part of town funds. And then ultimately, the, the remaining thirty split would be a rollover to the town to help fill some of the budget hole there so that it would offset the impact to the town's fund balance. So the Board of Ed would be working in cooperation with the town to help offset the fund balance impact. So again, the thirty, forty, thirty spill, split. If you take a look at the last page, summary of considerations, looking at the bottom, this thirty, forty, thirty split would be the one ninety-two, seven sixty-five as the E R F request. The COVID request would be two fifty-seven oh twenty-one. And the role to town would be something in the zone of one ninety-two, seven sixty-five to roughly two hundred something as the number potentially fluctuates. All of these are predicated on the beginning year, or the balance at the time of one million, two sixty-three oh seventy-three, which is as of, as of yesterday. So each time I do this document, I adjust it to the balance that is available at that time. You'll notice that we have held fast with this for some time now. I do expect again, up and down a bit as we do severances, but we also gain back some things. So so this summary page ultimately lays it all out in one table. The one thing that has been approved by the board thus far is what in this document is called option three, which is those items that do not mitigate fiscal year twenty-one, but are needed, such as the Clorox units. So thank you. And that, that is in process right now and has been approved by the board. What needs to be, or I would deeply recommend approving next is the recommendation two, which is the deposit into the district medical account. We really need to make that deposit. We have fourteen operational days left to do it. So I'm putting it on the radar now that we really do need to have the nod of the board so that we can execute at least this second recommendation. And then ultimately recommendations one, four and five. I mean, ideally you would, you would be okay with it tonight, but you could put those off potentially to June twenty-fourth. Keeping in mind that, you know, we will only then, if we wait until June twenty-fourth, you know, we will only then have really four working business days to execute the things. And that can sometimes be problematic. I don't like waiting to that point if I can avoid it because many unpredictable things can happen. People can get sick. People can be hospitalized, things can happen. And if I lose core people at that time, I won't be able to execute things as fast as I would otherwise. So I would hope, I would rather not be up against that wall if I can avoid it. But you know, obviously whatever has to happen, has to happen. One thing about option five or recommendation five is this amount would be moved over to the town in a, in one chunk because ultimately those funds go over to the town. And the town then would may, making decisions about a way, you know, whether to honor the request to put, you know, one ninety-two into education reserve and two fifty-seven into COVID pandemic and so on. But the role to the town piece that is part of this would be strictly for the town to use at its, at its discretion to offset the impact of, you know, on, on the, on the reserve. So that is in a nutshell, this version on six ten of the phase document updated with the town council's information and the information that, that I was able to get together on P P E based on conversations that I've been having. Submitted respectfully to the board.
Okay, perfect. Let's go through with a board question. So Tony, why don't you go first there?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Will, I just had one quick question on, I guess it's recommendation four in the P P E. So the value of that P P E or the amount that you're talking there, I guess is based on your conversations with the state. Given that we still don't have real clear directive on how next year is going to be, are you anticipating that the amount you have there will be sufficient or is there a very strong possibility we'll see a second bill?
Well, what I'm going with on this is I think it will be nearly impossible for districts to have throwaway items. What this allows us to do is purchase reusable items. So we would issue, for instance, certain reusable things to our staff and to students. And they could, they, the families would then be cleaning them, putting them in the, you know, washing machine, that kind of thing. This strategy would allow us to, to, this was, is in a strategy that is affordable and, and this is an approximated amount for what this would cost for these reusable items. I anticipate that most districts will be in a position where we will want to issue reusable items. If we're in the situation that we cannot use reusable items, this cost will go up significantly. So if, you know, spending this would help us in terms of getting to a certain point. But if they then require something above and beyond this for certain populations, that number could go up. But there's a chance that it won't. So in the next few months, we'll know a little bit more about this. But at the very least, we will still need to have face shields for certain populations and masks for populations. So there is no way that we will not ultimately need these items. The question would be whether we would need more. And I think right now I am hoping that, that we would be getting most of what we needed out of this expense. But you know, but it only could go up from there. So this would take a chunk out of whatever it is next year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Will. Madam Chair.
Let's go to Jacob.
Okay, so I had a couple of questions here. So I guess the first one is talk about the options for the remaining funds. So as you mentioned, like we'll send it over as one chunk and then I'll be up to the town council what to do with it. So if we made any sort of motion tonight, maybe like some sort of straw poll supporting some sort of division of it so they get a sense of what the board would like, but it'll be up to them. Is that?
Yeah, if you, for instance, said you were good as a board with the thirty, forty, thirty split on the remaining amount, you know, after one through four, let's say you said okay to all of this tonight, which, you know, I can understand, you know, if there's trepidation. Certainly that would be a, a great operational thing for, for us. But, um, but if you did that, then under the thirty, forty, thirty split, anything not expended in the, in one through four, whatever is left after the one through four would be spend, would be requested of the town in a thirty, forty, thirty split. So we would, those monies would be rolled over to the town and I would, under the direction of the board, send a memo to the council. Or actually I could send a memo to the council that said, we respectfully request that the funds be, you know, utilized in the following manner. That, you know, this, the thirty percent of these funds be used for educational reserve fund deposit. Forty percent of these funds be used for the COVID pandemic account, should that account be created by the town council. And the remaining amount or thirty percent that is remaining would be rolled to the town to help mitigate fund balance impacts. So we would then send such communication with that request. And that would wrap up, you know, the dollars as we get to the end of the year. Whatever would be remaining would be in a thirty, forty, thirty split. And that, that's, that would cover it in terms of describing how it would be allocated.
Okay, um, so I guess with that, I, I know earlier we had talked about putting the full one percent into the E R F. And I still, I kind of like that idea and I personally would like to see more put into the COVID fund or whatever we want to call it. As far as the P P E goes, I can see the concern there. I think like if we did need more, the COVID fund idea would be the exact sort of thing that I, well, I think that's why that, that fund would even exist in case you would have an unanticipated increased need for that. And then the, the last thing I just had is can you tell us a little bit more about this edgenuity software? This is a new thing for me. I'm just curious if I can get some more details on that.
Yeah, edgenuity software is, there's more of a description up here with it. Basically, it's one of the leading providers of the K-12 online resources. So the way it's been used in the past is if we have a student who is in one of our specialized programs and, you know, there is no course that fulfills their course requirements offered currently. We're able to pull in one of the edgenuity courses so that the student can complete their program of study. So typically, this has been used with special populations, a variety of students in that manner and supplementally. Because of the capability of edgenuity to be very, very flexible, we anticipate that next year, given the circumstances that we're inheriting, we may have many students who are in a situation that for one reason or another are unable to complete coursework in the traditional way. And in order to keep those kids on track and to avoid potentially having to have the students serviced by a variety of outplacement programs or some other kind of arrangement, we could make an investment in edgenuity and have the flexibility to deliver courses such so that those individuals would not have to seek other methodologies for achieving that. So this is a cost effective way of ensuring ourself against certain potential impacts of what is likely to be a great deal of variability, variability, variability next year in students' experiences and, and completion of program. We do expect that based on what I see from the state, and I am really hoping that maybe there is some major miracle and things shift. But we are expecting that we're going to have some version of in and out of school next year. And that's something that we just want to be prepared for. The state has not given any guidance on that yet. Again, still anything for, for actual the year of or the fall, it hasn't provided any guidance. But as we get into the next few weeks, we'll be coming together a lot to talk about that. But I'm hoping in the next few weeks, we'll have a lot more guidance and a lot more to talk about. But this is kind of low hanging fruit from the standpoint that we're pretty sure that there's going to be kids that are going to need unusual arrangements. And this will help us fill that gap. And we have experience with this and it has helped us before in filling those gaps.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Let's go to Rini.
Um, thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Will. I have a couple of questions. So the first one is just to kind of nail this down under E on the Chromebooks that are being bought through the CARES Act. Cause we've batted around a number of different, how many we would get, what are, how many are you expecting to be able to get through this CARES Act?
I'm estimating that we would get roughly the hundred and eighty or so that are not, you know, that are not functioning well. But what we do have to But what we do have to kind of try to figure out is that the supply chains for this are China. And there may be some fluctuations with respect to supply and what that and that might impact costs. Because of, you know, the the whole supply situation has been kind of turned a little bit sideways. So we, you know, we we're probably going to get about a hundred and eighty or so for that. We also will have to make an investment in this particular group of ones. We're going to get and try to get some funds available for the cases and the chassis to protect them. Because these units are going to be deployed in a way that we'd want to make sure they don't get destroyed, you know, from droppage or something.
I just wanted to know because we've we've talked about different levels. So that that was one question. My next question, and and I do want to just a quick shout out to the process this year with the town council and everything. It's been nice to really have that good working relationship. And it it just felt like it it has gone well. So I would like to kind of send them a thank you and a thanks to all the board members for, you know, all working together on that. So on the edgenuity software, you have a range of six thousand to twenty five thousand, and you're using this year's funds. So if it comes in at six thousand, what happens to the nineteen thousand that's left? Or you know what I'm saying? How does how's that going to work?
I anticipate the twenty five. It's just that I know the situation that we have had in the past. Under very different circumstances, added up to about six. So like, under non covid situations, we, you know, pivoted into this for six.
Right. I'm just saying, whatever the number would be, like, if it's ten and then we had fifteen left, like, what would happen to that funding? Does it end up going into sort of the unexpended funds? Because obviously, you got to complete this before June thirty, right?
Yes, yes.
So you're going to have a number and yeah, that's all I was getting.
If if it's less than twenty five, it will roll into the the category five. And then that will become part of the thirty forty thirty.
Okay. And then that rolls into kind of my last question, which maybe tags on a little bit to what Jacob was talking about. What is the change in thought to this thirty forty thirty? Before, we've been very specific that we wanted the three ninety nine to go into the ERF and that the balance would be available for covid. So this is kind of a rather different, you know, approach. Where whereby I do see that the money that would be left from the covid fund would where we would be asking for that to go into the era. But in total, you know, we're we're setting aside four forty nine. I think our prior, you know, picture was really kind of all of this. So I'm just just wondering, what's the why the change in strategy and so forth?
The the two things really, the thirty forty thirty split gives me the ability to have you be able to tell me in a timeline like now. Where you'd want the chunks to go, and I would be able to execute it based on a percentage. Within the remaining business days of of the fiscal year. So like, if I tried to choose actual numbers here, and as we go along, those numbers move up and down and up and down. Just saying thirty forty thirty is where we're going to go with the chunks. Or if you decide that there should only be chunks one and two here, then you could just tell me fifty fifty or sixty thirty or whatever you wanted to do.
Right, but you're recommending the thirty forty thirty where before we were kind of really, to your point, like. You know, most of it going into ERF because we were expecting that we might have significant needs next year. And the balance to be saved towards the covid fund. And then if we didn't use that, it would go back to the town. So this is, in my mind, it's kind of a big shift in strategy and and how we're going to use funds that are left over from this year.
Well, it, so respectfully, I I'm not looking at as a massive shift, but it is a change in paradigm slightly in that. You know, giving sort of or trying to set sort of a level for each. But it's based on some of the town council's conversation with respect to. To actualizing the covid pandemic sort of account creation. So there are ramifications that have become, you know, the 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 situation evolved at the town council meeting. In a way that suggests that the covid account. It could roll back. I mean, you know, although I'm not, you know, they have to, they have to put this in in writing, so to speak, they have to finalize it. But that it could roll back into the ERF fund if the covid money was not used. That was not part of some of the original conversations. So that means that anything put into a covid account or an ERF account can ultimately be almost the same thing. And that, you know, what isn't used will be rolled in. And so there they they have sort of this duplicitous or dual purpose of, you know, whether you split it one way or the other, they can roll. But having said that, you know, the the amount for rollover has been there the last couple of times. In conversations with the town, I know that there will be, you know, a certain amount of fund balance used. This is just the ability to further provide opportunity for the town council and the board to work together. And to say, okay, so there are these two chunks, the ERF and the covid. But there is an amount earmarked here to help offset the impact on the fund balance. Because there's a lot of conversations about fund balance. And having some amount that the board transferred over would be a almost, you know, an act of good faith. Under these very, very unusual pandemic circumstances. To allow them to balance their budget in the way that 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 is needed for everybody's benefit. So it just gives a nod to the hard work you were speaking of a few moments ago of the town council and the board working so well together. In helping, you know, having the both groups work collectively to help not only set up a covid fund, not only set aside the era fund. But also provide a a chunk that can help mitigate some impacts on on fund balance.
Okay, that's great. I I love that. And I, you know, personally, I'm very grateful, as I said, about the the working together. We're all one community, and and I think it's great. I just was curious about, because it did seem like a little of a shift. But I appreciate that, and I think that was all of my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Rini. Let's go to Karen.
Thanks, Dr. Willard. I just had hopefully two quick ones. As far as the thirty forty thirty split and kind of the new philosophy here. It sounds like it gives you a little bit more flexibility. And I'm also going to assume that you've probably already had conversations with town manager, Mr. Rosen about this.
Yeah, I mean, it with it with respect to the math of the thirty forty thirty. It actually makes it much more operationally viable for me. Because the board is recommending a percentage split. And I can execute a percentage split with different numbers, you know, all the way up to the very last day or last business day. If I'm trying to use number numbers, then I got to go back to the board and say, well, it's not exactly, you know, X, it turned into Y. Or it's not exactly this, it's that, which would be really hard to do in a timeline like this. So.
It's a roadblock for you, for sure.
Well, it makes it a hard, it's harder, it's very difficult to execute that. If you are able to say as a board, yep, with the remaining funds here, we would do a, you know, thirty forty thirty. Or whatever percentage split you ultimately want to do. I know exactly what I have to do with the remaining funds at the end. You know, those percentages go into those places, and that is recommended. And we have the letter and everything lines up nicely at the end with a communication, you know, that matches everything the board has talked about. Otherwise, I have to deal with figures I don't know what they're ultimately going to be. So it just operationally makes it cleaner.
I'm good. And then I just. I had printed out, and it's probably old at this point, the rules for operating summer schools during covid. And in there, it talks about using green products, but I know that you had talked about a waiver. And I I lost track of where that was at and getting three to sixty things and.
Yeah, we are not doing, we're not doing in person what we call extended year school. We're not doing that in person.
Okay, so this doesn't apply to.
Right, we we could not, within a reasonable amount of expense, offer in person school. And make all the adjustments that we're being. That we're part of that.
So the green, the green products thing doesn't apply. Well, they haven't given us anything yet as far as guidelines for reopening actual school.
Correct.
So I was just curious if that was.
There is no way on God's earth that they're going to make us stick to green. You know, I mean, that's.
That it's crazy. Yeah, okay.
Most of the green does not kill, it doesn't kill Corona. So there there's just, or most of them don't do it the way other things do. So, you know, I I think when we get to that final communication, superintendents across the state have been communicating with the state. On a variety of things that have been coming out. You know, and I hope that we'll get a a clear picture soon from them about certain things. But, you know, we'll know a lot more maybe in a few weeks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Sure.
Let's go to, well, Jacob, we already went. So let's go to Christina Lord, next on the list.
Hey, guys. I like this plan. Well, with the, can you scroll up so I can see the numbers again?
Sure.
The thirty forty.
Oh, the, you mean.
I kept going off to look at it on my desktop.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, that's.
I like the idea. Of the two hundred thousand towards the ERF. I feel like the covid fund gives us better flexibility with moving forward with any unanticipated expenses. I think it gives us more flexibility than the ERF. And then rolling money to the town. I don't know if that could help with any, like, I know it's to help with fund balance mitigation because we are using a lot of money from the fund. But if there's any unanticipated expenses with Birch Grove, is that something that that money could be used for?
Yes, and they could decide to do that anyway. Because remember, ultimately, these dollars are all going to roll over to town. You know, you're making a, you're making a request here. And I think it 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 just is a, it's a kind of an act of good faith, sort of part of the request to say. Well, here's a chunk that, you know, that could be used in a mitigation, you know, in a sense, to help with this conversation. Because there there is always a lot of conversation around that. And in this unique circumstance and year. You know, that that might be something that helps, again, collectively, you know, bring some solidarity. But anyway, the the whole chunk of these, this this recommendation five is ultimately at the discretion of the town council, no matter what you ask for.
Okay.
So this is just you saying, hey, we'd like to see it in these chunks, you know. And, you know, I think there's a good chance they'll honor what you're asking for. But ultimately, this will be at the discretion of the council. Once they do make a transfer, however, into the ERF, you then have complete control over that with respect to, you know, special ed, tech and capital. But until that is done, and that does ha- doesn't happen until the third quarter and the auditor does their thing and the town council officially accepts it. Until that happens, the council, that's just, that's money in the fund, in the town's fund.
Okay, this is is what you recommend. I think it makes sense. It is definitely a different paradigm shift. From, you know. Some people had originally wanted the ERF to be two percent, and now we're, you know, doing. What's this point, you know, almost half a percent, but. No, that's just, I was just thinking out loud. I like what you suggested. The edgenuity software I briefly looked at online. I'm just curious, and I guess this is outside of a budget discussion. Does that help all students or is it a per student type of situation?
It's more like we per student, as the opportunity or need arises, we would have the ability to respond to it. Just like we have had six thousand dollars of it arise in the past.
Because what I was thinking, and maybe this is just my, you know, my dreams of the the schools opening up for the kids. But there I I recognize too that there may be people that don't want to physically go back to school. Or can't if they're immunocompromised. And I was just looking at, is there any kind of software or any kind of? Anything in this that could help with like a hybrid model of in and out of school? And or is that exactly what this does?
It does, it is more or less exactly how we use that, yeah. Because if we provide a program for a child, and we may be, we may be half virtual, half in out. You know, there's a child who cannot come in. We will be in a position where we're probably able to offer it virtually and in person. And this would help fill some of the gaps that a person that has to do it entirely virtually might have. So we wouldn't need to do any other outplacing or any other things because we would have the options and the ability to provide a program through our school. And just to make a quick comment on the ERF and the shift. Before, we didn't actually have an official covid, you know, the the town council officially endorsed or mentioned. A covid fund, pandemic covid fund. Prior, it was a theoretical conversation. It got it got finalized, you know, or or at least acknowledged in that town council meeting. So now that's a possibility. So we didn't have that container before, really, and now we do. And because it can roll back in, you know, then you're in a place where if you put it in the covid fund at the end, if it's not used, it can become part of the educational reserve. Which is what has been discussed. But again, these things are still, you know, they they are what the council discussed on six eight. They would have to go to the ordinance on that, and that would take until probably August to finalize.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I relinquish the floor, Ash.
Okay, let's go to Dana.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Watt. I appreciate you putting this together. And I thought you mentioned it because I'm looking at my packet. I know you've updated a million times based on different meetings and as different directives have changed. This is going to be available in the dashboard.
It's on the dashboard now, and it'll go public as soon as the count, board is done tonight. Before I leave the office, I'll be posting it to our budget site.
To the public site. Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. I did hear a few people, I like, several people had used the word flexibility with this. I think everything that's been going on, excuse me, sorry, with covid and such and directives literally changed by the day, minute, hour, right? Or hour. I like the fact that there is some flexibility with send your ideas and your considerations. I definitely think that time is not on our side, that it's probably paramount that we we make some decisions promptly based on your recommendations. I guess some of my concerns would be that I don't think that we've talked about it tonight. Would be additional Chromebooks, and I someone did mention, I believe it was Rini who asked about the Chromebooks with the CARES Act. That's the hundred and eighty that would be or hundred and eighty or so that would be replaced that were the damaged ones. I think what's concerning to me would be the amount of emails we've been receiving as of late. With either tech issues or Chromebook issues or people asking for Chromebooks, even in the last couple of weeks of school. They need them, and I think Jen responded to someone at like nine or nine thirty at night, saying, we'll have one to you tomorrow morning, fill out the survey. My concern is is we don't know what next fall brings. As you would, have you had said, I can't even speak, I'm sorry. As you have you have spoken about, that it could be split, you know, half in school, half at home, could be all at home. We don't know what that really looks like. I don't think we are going to know anytime soon. But again, things change by the minute. So I guess my concern would be where where are plans to to help those families? That cannot sustain the temporary Band-Aids that they've used for technology at home. If in fact, we're going to continue to need to do some sort of home technology next year. You know, again, I, you know, there are several families that are using their own devices at home that I don't know if they they can sustain that if this becomes an extended situation.
Yeah.
Is that somewhere in this that I missed, or is that something that we would need to additionally talk about?
Well, at this time, the amount that we would be dedicating to the replacement of units or to the deployment of of these units would be. In that CARES Act allocation, which I'm trying to scroll to here. I think I I have it in here up here. That that's what we have, you know, allocated at this time for that purpose. That, that's what we have, you know, allocated at this time for that purpose. Beyond that, you know, I will obviously continue to look for ways of achieving that end. We do and will, you know, we have eight hundred of those deployed, a thousand of them totaled. And we won't, you know, with twelve, twelve hundred, if you consider staff, we are not going to reclaim those unless their seniors are leaving the district. So we're going to leave these with the students so that we are ready when we go into next year. If by some chance we are one hundred percent in school, we would then, you know, be thinking about how we want to move forward with reclaiming or, or, or what we want to do with that. But for now, we are not going to reclaim the ones that have been deployed or distributed because there's a strong possibility that we will have some in and out and they will be needed in that way. So, well, the ones that have them, you know, we will be covering those families. Additional needs. We are looking for options to, to do whatever would be needed additionally beyond that. But what is provided for is, you know, the hundred and eighty or so in the CARES Act. That's what's provided for here.
Okay. Um, so right now, if, I mean, I don't know, for round numbers, about how many students you, I know this is a tough number for you to probably figure out, but, or to on the top of your head, but how many students are working from home, not on school devices right now?
Um, you know.
Roundabout.
Eleven hundred.
Yeah, I guess my concern would be is what if to, you know, fall comes and those eleven hundred families or those students, eleven hundred students say, hey, I need a Chromebook. You, I can't use my iPad or my child, my student can't use my laptop. I mean, we have to have some sort of, I mean, or would that be what E R F would be for? Would that be what?
E R F is, uh, E R F is one place, uh, E R F does allow you to, to have technology expenses. And you, as the board, because the, the funds that are in E R F are at your discretion for those three things as a board. So you wouldn't have to get any other body's approval for the use of the E R F for the funds that are currently in it. Anything transferred into it is under the discretion and control of the board for those, those three categories of things. So you could do that out of the E R F for that kind of purpose, yes.
Okay. And I, I, I just want this to be kind of top of mind. I don't want to keep, keep beating a dead horse. I know that Chromebooks has been a topic of conversation since the beginning of time, you know, as of late with this. But, uh, you know, I think we need to be acutely aware, um, because I know what, one thing that you've mentioned before is the safety and security of the, the Chromebooks that are distributed from the educational system have that, that, that cybersecurity and stuff that can protect those students online versus if a parent were to buy a Chromebook or utilize their iPad for their student, it's not in protection, which I'm, it is a sense of worry to, to parents. So I, I just think it needs to be a top of mind for us to be prepared.
There is an advantage, a very, very clear advantage to having it be a district Chromebook. Yes, that is true. I do want to point out unrelated that we're getting close to ten o'clock. Madam Chair, in case you wanted to just make a, or someone wanted to make a motion to extend.
Yes, I was going to do that once Dana was finished.
Sorry.
I'm talking, I can just say I'd like to make a motion to, to go past ten.
Kate Howard Bender, I'd like to second that motion.
Discussion, anyone have anything to say? I'm not looking at the hands, but if you have one physically putting something up. So let's go with the, um, I, if you would like to extend her meeting after ten, and if you don't. Jacob.
Hi.
Karen.
Hi.
Christine.
Hi.
Rainie.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Lauren.
Hi.
Kate.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Okay, our motion will, uh, we will extend past ten. So back to Dana.
Okay, so off the Chromebooks. Now, um, bus and transportation. With, with COVID, I don't know if this is even on your radar, if this has even been a conversation with the bus companies or anything like that. Um, but regulations, let's say if we, if we are in a perfect world and we actually do open those doors and we go to, back to school and we get our kids back in those classrooms, uh, obviously, there's going to be some sort of regulation um, with the bus companies and where kids are sitting in certain space or students are sitting in certain spaces apart and regulations. Well, how would that impact our current bus contract? Would, would that be something we need to talk to them about? Because it sounds to me like we'd be doing multiple routes in a day in addition to the ones that we're already doing. Is this even something that we're close to talking about? Or is this something that's down the road?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to, um, trying to find the right words, but some of what has come to superintendents in terms of discussions around this have been utterly ridiculous. You know, like, for instance, you know, we can't incur eighteen million dollars of transportation. You know, that's never going to be possible. And so certain things that come out, you know, of the rumor mill are so untenable that they're not worth talking about yet because it's impossible. But, um, unless the federal government would like to subsidize like eighteen million dollars of transportation. So, uh, which is not going to happen. So, um, what we're doing right now is, um, superintendents are working collectively through organizations to communicate, um, certain messages to, um, the people that are considering these things. And I anticipate that we'll have a certain amount of flexibility with respect to what we do. Because, you know, there's no way that they can crush individual towns and, and systems with things that we could never execute in a hundred years. What I do see happening, however, is, you know, there, there will be adjustments to scheduling that will require adjustments and may require some financial adjustments, but will be more logistics adjustments. So my current strategies right now with respect to the very, very, very little that we have for guidance would be to make logistical adjustments. And so in the next, um, by June seventeenth, we're supposed to receive other information. So it makes sense to start to pull, you know, people together to start looking at this once we get this information and have something to look at that, um, that isn't complete conjecture. But I would suggest that it'll have more to do with logistical rearranging than, um, having to, uh, to do something that would incur massive amounts of additional expenditure. Because there isn't a district in the state that is ready to incur, you know, a massive amount of additional expenditure in this way. So they, they also know that too. So we're going to be making a lot of logistical adjustments. It will impact, or very likely will impact how kids experience the school day. But it has to be within the financial realm of, you know, towns and districts in the state to, to manage. And, um, the powers that be, I believe, are coming to that kind of recognition. And, um, so I think we're going to be okay, but it will require a lot of work on the people, you know, on, on staff's part and, and we're ready to do it. And we'll be talking a lot more about that as we, we get the guidance from the state.
Okay. And my, thank you. I get all these unknowns are concerning. I guess my last question, I don't even know if this is a budget conversation, but a lot of talk about reopening schools and get kids back, the students back into school. Do we have any movement on the reopening committee? Or is that something we could talk about further down?
Um, so, yes, it's just that, uh, I have internal committees that are coming together because we have, uh, you know, groups of staff that have to process information as soon as we receive it so that we have the right information to bring to the Tallinn Reopening Advisory Committee. You know, right now, we don't have any information to bring to the Tallinn Reopening Advisory Committee. So, you know, as we get into the next few weeks, that we will be ramping that up towards the, you know, from now to the end of June. By the time we get into July, I expect all of our various committees on this to be moving forward very rapidly because by then we should have the direction that we need. So I'll be spending the next few weeks pulling everybody together for that. And then we'll be looking at probably making a lot of, you know, um, progress. And we'll be meeting a lot in July as, as, as operational committees.
Okay. All right. Um, that's really the last question that I had, but I, I just wanted to say thank you. I do appreciate, you know, your time that you've put into this. I know that it's been ever changing and, um, you've had to change as the direction have changed. So I appreciate you being so flexible, uh, as well as having, um, a plan that we can really get behind. And I, and I appreciate your time and dedication to that. So thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Yeah, let's go to, uh, Griffin.
Okay, so, um, thank you, Dr. Willitt. I know that this, yeah, has been changing a ton. So I appreciate you keeping this updated almost daily. The only thing I wanted to really talk about is I just have the concern about the thirty forty thirty split. You know, just kind of piggybacking on what Dana had said, I'm also concerned about the Chromebooks that we don't know what we're going to look like yet in, in the fall. So if we do need to buy more, I just, I'm a little concerned about lowering the E R F transfer. Um, and then just kind of what you were saying about the P P E, you know, what if we do need a completely different or more or, you know, we're just not sure. So, uh, my only thought would be if you would, you know, consider maybe a forty forty twenty split. I just worry about giving thirty percent back to the town. I understand, you know, kind of where you're coming from that, and I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, it really, you know, shows that the town has been great with work. The town council has been great working with us and we certainly want to, you know, help out with the entire town. But that would be my only thought is perhaps a forty forty twenty kind of split. So I just wanted to kind of get your thoughts on if you thought that that would be something that would be beneficial.
I, um, ultimately, um, it is at the discussion of the board and, uh, you know, I respect the, the board's feeling on it in the end. And certainly those, those are good points. From my conversations and review of information available to me, I think that there is the high potential that the, the town in its processes over the next week or so would, would, um, you know, would find that, that kind of split helpful in, uh, in fund balance mitigation. But have, you know, but again, you know, the, I am, uh, just trying to, you know, provide a, uh, opportunity to balance the various facets that exist for, for the board. And I do think that, you know, no matter what you do at the end of the day on this, you know, I think it'll be appreciated. And, uh, and for me, I will deeply appreciate if the board was able to give me a thumbs up on all these recommendations because operationally, that would mean that we could really set these things in motion. So for instance, even on recommendation one, I want to make the encumbrances, I want to get, you know, we want to get all of that like ready to go. We need to get the invoices. I want to have the invoice ready, the encumbrance ready, and I want to be able to tell the payroll people to just push the button, you know, and, and do it. But, uh, until I get bored, the nod for it, uh, I'm going to be in that holding pattern. And I don't have a philosophical problem, you know, with that at all. It's just that I only, you know, again, I only, we only have fourteen business days. And the closer we get to the end, the more nervous I get about anomalies that could happen. That would, you know, prevent us to, would have, create problems. That's all. So, you know, I think any way you go with it, it's appreciated.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, so that would be my only thought is perhaps a forty forty twenty split. And Madam Chair, I do agree with Dr. Willitt. I think that we need to finalize all this tonight. I think we need to kind of, you know, let Dr. Willitt and, and his staff, you know, get going on this and, and finalize all this. I think that that's important because there's going to be a lot more going on in the next couple of weeks. So I think it'd be great to, to, um, make this final. So, um, that's actually all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, I would agree with Christine. So if everyone can start thinking in their head, we'll do a straw poll.
Oh, I, I didn't get a chance to speak.
Yeah, I'm not done yet, Kate.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm just letting people know, go while you're talking, while, you know, we still have stuff going on. Really start looking because we are going to have a straw poll. So just keep that in mind. Kate, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I just want to make sure. Thank you. I appreciate that. First, I do, just very quickly, thank you so much, Dr. Willitt, for being so flexible with packaging the needs of our, our students and our, our schools in a way that is palatable for everybody. I really appreciate the efforts there. Um, I did want to just bring up E R F, um, so because we, we talked about it quickly, it was mentioned earlier. And, uh, there was state legislation, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I might be wrong. There was state, um, legislation that said, um, that we could change the total percentage to two percent. But it's my understanding that the town council would have to, um, decide to do that. So that's, that's what I know about, um, Education Reserve Fund. Is that accurate, Dr. Willitt?
Yes, um, the, the law, I believe, lets you get up to two percent. They would have to change the ordinance for that. Okay. Change the language of the ordinance, like, likely, I think.
Right. Okay, thank you. I just had a quick question about edgenuity, and then I wanted to talk about Chromebooks, and then I will shut up. Edgenuity, um, I don't, I'm not familiar with that, but it sounds promising. I would imagine, and you, maybe you guys haven't gotten there yet. I would imagine that there would be a significant amount of input from teachers with regard to where their students are at the end of the year so that, uh, there would be a, a good concept about what they needed going forward and whether the edgenuity courses would be available or would be appropriate for their next educational needs. Is that kind of what you had in mind?
Yes, I mean, uh, you know, we, we just want to make sure, you know, we can cover all the bases, yes.
Right. And, and would this mitigate, uh, potential, potential, um, uh, concerns regarding S R B I R T I?
Yes, it would help in that way as well.
Okay. That's kind of all I wanted to say about that. I'm, I'm going to do some more research on about it because it sounds kind of good. And then Chromebooks, I just wanted to kind of put out percentages here because I'm still extremely concerned. I know last, um, time we met, um, I said that they were the, the current gateway to learning. Very different from when I went to school. But it, it really, really concerns me that we're looking at, um, le- less than fifty percent. We're looking at about, even with the hundred eighty, those hundred eighty that we're going to buy with the CARE Act are going to replace a hundred forty-eight if my number, if my numbers are right. And so we still have, um, about fifty-seven-ish percent of Tallinn Public School students without a, like, a consistent, um, device. And when I think about that, I think about it like in terms of, okay, so your, your math teacher has this algebra book and everybody has the same algebra book, so they're working on it at the same time, doing the same thing together. But if everybody has different algebra books, it's going to make it more difficult for them to have a similar and cohesive and coherent, um, educational experience. So I'm really concerned that we are still kind of talking about not providing the educational tools to fifty-seven percent or so of our students. And I just wanted, I just want to say that, um, for what it's worth. For this, this plan, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I just, you know, like, the flexibility is really going to matter. Uh, I, I saw, and, and I've been watching, in terms of like getting back to school, I've been watching all of the, um, the updates coming from Cabe, coming from the state, um, coming from the state. Massachusetts has actually put out some stuff that, you know, could or could not impact what we're doing. I mean, we've seen that everybody sort of doesn't know what's going to happen next. So that the most flexibility for us to be as nimble as possible in this environment, I think is, I think is the best way to go. So again, to everybody, thank you. Um, and thank you especially to Dr. Willitt. Uh, my, my question really, I, I guess my, I didn't really have any other questions. I just want to make sure I got my piece about, um, the educational tool on, on the record. Appreciate all your work, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Um, Dr. Will, I just had a couple of questions. Um, in terms of the Clorox system, we are putting a request through FEMA, correct?
Oh, yeah.
And we do that with the P P E as well?
Yeah, yeah. And, and if it got funded, it would go to the town.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yes, yeah, we definitely will.
Okay, so it will be a request. So, um, do you need a straw poll or do you need the official, like, move it to board action?
Um, you know, if, either way, uh, I can, I can, as long as this whole group knows that, you know, you, if you're good with it, I go with it. And, and that's that. Um, I think either way would work. Um, if you wanted to motion to move it to board action and then make a motion to approve all of the recommendations, you know, in the superintendent's communication. you know, in the superintendent's communication, you know.
The one question that that seemed to come up was Griffin with the, you know, thirty forty thirty versus the forty forty twenty. So I think that that would be something that, um, as board members, it should be something discussed which way for a vote. Because she was kind of last on there saying that and threw that idea out there, and I kind of liked that forty forty twenty. I'm not sure how everyone else would feel, so I don't know if we should do a straw poll so that if we move it to board action that we know exactly what we are voting on if we're doing the.
Yeah, you could, you could say motion to accept recommendations one through four and recommendation five with the modification that the split be forty forty twenty. You know, something like that. I can write it up real quick if you want. But either way, whatever way Madam Chair would like to do it is is going to be okay with me. I'm just getting the direction.
Yeah, no, and I and I agree that you do, but that was seems to be the only thing that kind of came up that I want to know what members feel like, if they want the thirty forty thirty or the forty forty twenty.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if I can just ask everyone, or, okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think a straw poll would be appropriate for clarifying that one issue, but.
Perfect, and then we can move it to board action with the whole kit and caboodle.
An official vote does need to be taken for the the overall.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking. Okay, so let's do a straw poll on the thirty forty thirty split, and then we will do one for the forty forty twenty split. So Jacob, let's.
Sorry, I had a quick question about the other option that was thrown out there, only because we're changing the amount, we're rolling back to the town.
Yep.
How do we know they're okay with that? And how do we know there's not going to be any repercussions from that?
Dr. Willard?
Well, remember that at the end of the day, this entire chunk is at their discretion. If they don't like something that you are recommending here, they can simply say that they do not like it and that they do not want to go with it. So you're ultimately just making a, you know, a ask. You're making an ask here that it be considered to be done in this way. And you're just telling me that it is okay for me to author that ask and to then have, say, Ashley sign or Madam Chair sign on with me. And, you know, that's all you're really doing. They ultimately will make that final determination regardless.
The only part that is not falling under that, Dr. Willard, is like the one through four. If we approve those spendings, that's okay, though, right?
Yeah, correct. So thank you for that clarification. Right, the the one, what I am talking about is, um, is item five. Yes, yeah, one through four is in your discretion, absolutely. And anything else you've spent an end of years is out of your discretion, but that one would be.
Leftover, okay. I just wanted to clarify that so we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
I, can I, I have a question too about this other possibility. Forty forty twenty versus forty.
It was thirty forty thirty, which is what Dr. Willard had. And Griffin mentioned a forty forty twenty.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. My question is just, what's better for the kids and what's better for schools?
Is to me?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think it's a difficult situation and that, you know, in the end, I think that, you know, this recommend, these recommendations that I put out for you, they they do help provide a situation where we don't have loss of staff beyond what you would have had in the one point five four. And, you know, I think under the circumstances, this helps, you know, the board and the town navigate its way through a very difficult situation. You know, if I had a, you know, again, the magic wand analogy, you know, but like if if I won the lottery tomorrow, I'd probably try to get us some more technology. But you do have the E R F for that as well, that you as a board can commit some of the E R F that is already in that fund to the acquiring of additional technology. And that is completely within the realm of what that can be used for. And you do have complete control over what's in there right now with respect to that amount. So you could do that as a board and cover that base as well and follow this. I think this shores up the holes that exist pretty well. And I think it also gives the town something to work with so that it doesn't have to make any last minute adjustments that might impact the board. It kind of helps in a number of different ways. If, you know, if it falls the way that I'm hoping it will.
Okay, so you're good, Kate?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we'll do the first one, straw poll for the thirty forty thirty. And that was initial, Dr. Willard's initial, what he sent to in the packet in the, for tonight. Oh, Jacob?
No.
Karen?
Yes, I would like to go with our education experts' recommendation.
So you would like to go with the thirty forty thirty?
Thirty forty thirty.
Okay, Griffin? Reenie?
Um, I guess I'm comfortable with really either. I I guess I'm going to just go with what Dr. Willard has has set out aside. I I like the idea of having a little bit more money in our, but if he thinks this is fine, I'll go with that.
Okay, Dana?
Yes.
Applaud?
Yes.
I can't hear you, Kate.
Oh, I I didn't say anything. I didn't hear my name. I'm sorry.
You were still pondering more.
No, no, I apologize. No, I didn't hear you say my name. The thirty forty thirty, please.
Thirty forty thirty, okay. Tony?
Thirty forty thirty.
Okay. And the thirty forty thirty, so that will be for the thirty forty thirty, Dr. Willard.
So you could do motion, you know, when you get there, when you move it to action. Motion to accept the phase three plan presented in the June ten, twenty twenty Board of Ed meeting and direct the superintendent to execute recommendations one through five. What you already did for three, but, you know, reiterate one through five and and covers the whole kit and caboodle.
But I do need to entertain a motion in order to move it to board action.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone have anything to say? Okay, um, Jacob?
Hi.
Karen?
Sorry, I was muted. I.
Christine?
I.
Reenie?
I.
Dana?
I.
Claude?
I.
Kate?
Yes, I.
Tony?
Hi.
I, therefore, the, we will move this to board action as K one. Let's move on to the committee and liaison reports. And let's see, we have the graduation task force. Do you want to give a little update?
Sure, um, we met, uh, last night. Yes, last night, sorry. And, um, we're just kind of plugging along. We've got a good proposal for what we can do for an in-person graduation. And, um, where our next step is going to be to bring it to the Eastern Highlands Health District and see if we can get approval. And then if not, we'll have to kind of tweak it a little bit. But, um, I think mostly everybody was pretty excited for it. So that's, uh, that's pretty much it. So we haven't figured out when we're going to meet next. We're going to wait and see after they approve or what they come back with. Thank you.
Um, curriculum committee, Kate?
Hello. That was not actually a lie. That was just me being silly. Okay, so curriculum committee was really great. I enjoyed the conversation. We really kind of dived into a lot of aspects of, like, where, how we can best apprise ourselves of curricular concepts. And we decided that we were going to start with really diving into S R B I and R T I, getting familiar with those requirements, dyslexia, so that we can be sure, especially considering the pandemic and the potential loss in education, what what impacts that all has on curriculum. We decided that we were going to do some homework to talk about that next time. We also talked about a timeline for our work, which is available. It's linked on the the minutes, which I'm sure Jen has probably already gotten up. I don't know.
That's my my fault. We haven't, but it's my fault. So sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay. I just, I just sent them yesterday, so.
It's all me, but anyway.
It's all good. It's all good. So that was pretty, pretty great. And then we also talked about, and I got to talk to you, I haven't sent you an email yet, Ashley, about the idea that on a monthly basis, we would ask the curriculum supervisors to come in and chat with us as a whole board. And then we would meet with them, this, our subsequent curriculum committee meeting to kind of go into deeper, deeper conversation about the curriculum and, you know, what needs they have and just to answer questions. So we we came up with a really good outline of of our work. It was pretty great.
Oh, that sounds awesome. Sorry that I had missed it. My work is a little crazy right now. Perfect, thank you. You did reach out on the reopening committee, Dr. Will. You kind of touched on that. I don't know if you want to add anything or if you're.
Um, no, just, uh, we're getting it together, pulling it together. We're we're all anxiously awaiting info from the state, and and we're not alone in that.
Perfect. Dana, you're out of, from Birch Grove. We got that taken care of tonight.
Get it home. She did phenomenal.
How about communication? I heard that you guys met right before, so.
Yep, communications, um, met this evening. And I just had a couple of items to bring tonight. And the first one was in, Mary Rose talked about earlier, engaging more with our parent organizations, T A P T O, the middle school P T O and booster club at the high school in a way that would kind of open up some dialogue between us and them. And, um, hopefully, I'm going to reach out to them and we'll see where we can take that and just kind of understanding their challenges. And, um, you know, they struggle with parent participation and fundraising and things like that. So I think it would be beneficial for both groups if we try to engage. We talked about, there's a great book out there called Beyond the Bake Sale, The Essential Guide to Family-School Partnerships. And I just kind of brought it up as a resource because it's a, it's a, it's a good book about how kids do better, basically, when parents are engaged in the schools and at home and in the school for their kids. And it does talk about P T O groups and how they can have constructive, inclusive aspects on kids in the classroom. So, um, we talked about that a little bit. And, um, Dr. Willard has a copy of that, I guess, if anybody wants to borrow it. Also, we just talked about communications policy and kind of a strategy update about communications in general. And more about the P T Os and parents and maybe doing some, yep, there's a book. Maybe doing, now that everybody's kind of familiar with Zoom meetings, maybe it might be easier to have something similar to his coffee hour, but include the P T Os and have parents come on. Because it's hard to get parents out to meetings with childcare issues and things like that. And if they can jump on a Zoom meeting, maybe that would make things a little easier. Not that anybody wants to do more Zoom meetings, but, you know, maybe when things normalize a little bit, it won't be so bad. But maybe it is an opportunity to get more parents out and have some casual conversations with us.
No, I love that.
That's about it.
Perfect, thank you. I don't think I'm missing anyone else. If you could, just let me know if I'm missing someone, but I think I got everyone. I don't have my little hand thingy.
There's a council meeting last night, Ashley, but, um.
Really late.
Long.
They beat you. It was five hours.
Yeah, I did not get a chance to jump on, Tony. I don't know if you did, but.
I was, I was. In fact, I was.
I was on another meeting earlier and then it was nutty night.
So this has been a, it's been a pretty good week to to liaison with the the council and that we had had two meetings. We had the the special meeting on the eighth with the budget discussion, which was particularly intriguing that they touched on, and and Dr. Willard can probably expound a bit, but had good conversation on some of the Birch Grove expenses that would come out of our budget and then go over to the town budget. They also talked about, I'm looking for here, you know, some of the challenges with the current budget. And at the end, ended up voting and approving the the budget that we've talked about here with ours coming. What is it, Dr. Willard, at about forty million?
Yep, forty oh one seven two nine oh.
Yes, yes. But there was some, it it was nice to watch, to see how some of those operations went and to make sure that, you know, there was, there was no fear to ask the hard questions and for the conversations that came out of that. To Karen's point, last night's meeting was no less exciting, albeit made our meetings look brief. They they spoke on the flag policy, a proclamation policy. You know, from my perspective, any meeting that talks a lot about policy is pretty exciting.
You're right, it's a little too. Okay, thank you. I think we have everyone else that's situated. So I will move on to the chairperson report. So we'll just go with this. This year is ending with more questions than answers. I attended the virtual graduation pictures for my nephew on Monday. While it's nice to include all students, I hope that we can get together for an in-person graduation, and those that can't attend will. So many milestones, not only for seniors, but every grade level. There were proms and dances, silence, Japanese tea ceremonies gone cold. Talon Green Day are set back without settlers. End of the year trips and memories are gone. The list goes on. Lockers are getting cleaned out and that only had occupants for a part year. These are sad times for many. Emotions are running at an all-time high. The budget we are setting forth for next year still has many questions. What will the new restrictions and guidelines that are set? How do we brace for impact, for lack of better words? This board is working with Dr. Willard and will need to make decisions that, I don't remember being in the brochure at the beginning of this. My main question to the board members that I would like you to think about is how will we come together to find solutions? How do we set a path forward? These terrains are uncharted. Let's try to listen to one another objectively and not close in the box. You know, it's definitely a different time right now. So that was all that I had. Just something quick. So we can move to K one. And if we are, I will entertain a motion, the, a very long motion that we have for items one through five.
Jacob, Mari, I can make that motion. Dr. Will, did you want to get it up on the screen or?
Sure, give me one real quick sec here. Trying to do this.
Need my teleprompter.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, here it comes. Share this. It's going to be called Pledge of Allegiance, but it's not the pledge of allegiance. Here we go. Can you see that one?
Yeah, okay.
If that works for the board.
Good, all right. I move to accept the phase three plan presented in the June tenth, twenty twenty Board of Education meeting and direct the superintendent to execute recommendations one through five.
Christine, applaud second.
Any discussion? Does anyone have anything to say before we vote? All those in favor can say aye. Any opposed can say nay, or you can abstain. So we will start off, Jacob.
I.
Karen?
I.
Christine? She said aye, but she couldn't really hear her.
Aye.
Perfect. Reenie? Oh, Reenie's, Reenie is muted too.
You guys muted us. I was unmuted. I.
Okay, Dana?
I.
Claude?
I.
Kate?
I.
Tony?
Hi.
Aye.
Yeah, my aye as well. Uh, Dr. Willett, the motion passes and you can go through with one through five.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the public participation. There's a two-minute time limit and it must be geared toward the items on the agenda. And if you could state your name and your address, um, let me get that little thing up. And Tony, the timer will give you the thirty seconds when it is. I I can't help it with Tony, the timer, just kind of.
Tony, the timer, really.
I like it.
So at this time, if you can raise your hand or star nine, then we can go through for the public participation. And I will give it a minute there. Okay, we have a Jonathan Dos Santos.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Dos Santos. I live at twenty-five Merlot Way, Talon, Connecticut. First off, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody in this meeting. It's been a very stressful three hours. And thank you, uh, Dr. Willett, for leading these people to through this crisis. As I know, it's very hard considering we just got news from UConn today.
Thank you.
Mister Hole, earlier in the meeting, you said something about your people. And I think it would serve everyone well on this board and in this town if everyone worked together at the moment. And not worry about political parties and that sort of thing. As Mrs. Lundgren said, come together at the end of the meeting. I really think as a twenty-year-old in this divided society that we should work together to get everything to happen the way it needs to happen for the better of everybody. And then under the strenuous, and my last thing is. Uh, I think Miss Mrs. Griffin is the head of this committee, so I don't know if she wants to answer this question. No one has to answer this question. It's just one I'd like to pose. We have a obviously very tight budget coming because of cuts that have. Occurred in the past few years and we've discussed the graduation being live. And how it costs around ten thousand dollars. And I was just wondering where that ten thousand dollars was coming from. And if it could be used for other things such of collapsing programs, such as the music program and the arts program. And you guys also discussed Chromebooks tonight, and I was wondering if that budget of ten thousand dollars would also be able to help use. For the Chromebook budget in the future as that's. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Jonathan. And um, we will continue on with the public participation if anyone else has something. And then um, the town members can talk during the points of information, just so that you know. So I know I haven't called on you before, so if anyone else at this time would like to talk, if you could raise your hand or star nine. Cause I know like usually Liz is Liz on here, so I'm sure she's here. We'll give it one more minute and then we will go to the points of information. Okay, points of information. Um, so we will go to Christine Griffin.
Hi, I just to answer Mr. Dos Santos's question, um, as far as the money for the graduation. Um, I believe it's just really the cost of the um screen, which is something that I'm not sure, Dr. Willett. If we've, you know, we had budgeted that when we had normal, when we would have had normal graduation. And we've also talked about using some of the class dues money that the seniors have paid. And they didn't get their class day and a couple of other functions, so I know that we've talked about possibly funds coming out of that. I do not believe any money is coming out of the art department or the music department or anything like that to pay for the screen for graduation. But you know, Dr. Willett might be able to answer that better than I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Willett, did you want to add on to that?
I think we would be needing to determine, uh, you know, ultimately where where that expense would come from. You know, the the um, the the teams working on the experiences for our our students are doing an amazing job. All around, everybody who's looking to put something together for the seniors is doing an amazing job. And in that process, um, you know, uh, you know, the there are things that we have never used before. Like we 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 haven't used a Jumbotron before, so we'd have to figure that one out. But um, you know, all of the various groups and parent groups and things that are trying are are trying to figure out how to make it all happen. So we're still in the process of trying to make it, trying to figure out how we're gonna make it all happen. And a lot will come, you know, more clear once we talk to E H H D on Monday, Eastern Highland Health District. You know, uh, Ms. Griffin and I will be talking to them Monday, so we'll we'll have more to to be able to talk about at that point.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Um, Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick points. Uh, one, just to tie on to what Karen was saying about today's communication meeting. I was uh pretty excited uh during the conversations concerning uh reaching out to the P T Os. Wanted to thank Mary Rose for her communication during the meeting. It's it's nice to get that perspective and I really appreciated that. Second, going back to uh my discussion earlier on the proclamation, if it pleases the chair, I'd like to, I'll shoot an email to you, Dr. Willett. With some ideas that we could potentially talk about in the next meeting for how the board can engage.
Perfect. Um, yeah, I definitely missed the spring fling. I mean, I never win the baskets, but I like at least getting the tickets for the baskets. Did anyone else have anything else? Out Fisher, Fisher, your hand is up and then we'll go to Jacob.
Yeah, I just not to add any more time to the clock, but um, I just wanted to point out one small thing I noticed. Dr. Willett would spend, if he won the lottery, he would spend the money on technology for the students. I I just wanna wanna point that out. If he won the lottery, he would give it to the students, so there's there's Dr. Willett for you. That's all.
Have to say, everyone's starting to get like all these new haircuts. I don't even recognize people anymore.
Yeah, he got his got his ears lowered, as they say, right?
Exactly. Um, Jacob?
Yes, so just real quick in relation to uh Mister Dos Santos comments, I I just wanted to point out as far as like the music and art programs and things. That we had extensive budget conversations about this. And I I think if he was interested in going back to reading the minutes, he would definitely see the effort and diligence we put up into that. Also, I just wanted to point out that um, one thing that we've been working very hard with these sort of post-COVID. Changes to our budget is creating one that preserves services and we've been able to do that. So it's certainly up on our radar, um, you know, with or without the graduation costs. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you, Jacob and Karen.
Yeah, I was just gonna add um that it's not just a Jumbotron for the second graduation. There's also costs involved in um hiring public safety and state troopers, so that's what kind of bumps up the the cost there. And um, there could be some unforeseen, we we just don't know yet as we. You know, hear from the health district and how we might have to change things a little bit, so with the plan. But there are additional costs.
Okay, perfect. Um, anyone else have anything? I think I got everyone. Okay, let's move on to um future. Dr. Will, do we have anything for? I mean, we have the instructional rounds tomorrow. If you want to go through all those different things on the list.
Yeah, so we um very excited about the instruction rounds tomorrow. Thank you to uh the board members who are able to do it understandably. Some can't um, you know, work in other reasons, so completely understand that. But um, thank you so much for for participating. Uh, the staff's very excited about it. You know, we, I wish, 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 wish that you could actually be walking into a physical building for this. So uh, we have a video that um we kind of patched together and um, you know, it's not really gonna do justice, but it'll start with the video. And then uh, we'll have narrative and you'll have an opportunity uh for that whole time to be able to interact with the staff that have executed this. So uh, really excited about that and I think you're gonna find it very helpful. Uh, mental health services initiatives, I did just get off the phone today with East Con. Um, I plan on doing a presentation whenever the board is ready for it, um, about some of the initiatives that we've started. And um, and are finding to be very fruitful and uh some uh partnerships that uh we're going to be able to make. That I think will also be very beneficial for us, especially as we get into next year. You know, the students have been experiencing a lot and uh we're seeing that and we're responding to it. And even the skills for adolescents class that we have now uh has been reporting that um, there's been some really excellent conversations. Supporting mental health with the students. Um, and uh, they all take that class and so that's been a real benefit too. Uh, bus stop safety, that's on the radar for whenever the board wants to do it. Ultimately, first student will come and do that. Portrait of graduate visioning continues. Um, the COVID thing uh has put a crump, crimp in just about everything. But um, you know, continuing that work and we'll be talking a lot more about that as we get into uh the history of the visioning and the goals. And the um Board of Ed goal setting, we'll have a primer that includes the status on that. Pathways and lighthouse, we'll talk about whenever the board's ready. I'll present. Understanding by design, the curriculum committee's covering some of that. But again, when the board's ready, we'll present and um, and goal setting you're aware of. Regionalization seems to be an ongoing situation and so right now in in the grand scheme of things, we're probably not gonna get to that for a while. But goal setting, as you know, is coming up very soon.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I don't believe we have any new business, therefore I will um entertain a motion for adjournment.
Jacob, Mari, I move that we adjourn this Board of Education meeting at June tenth. I, that's the date, at ten thirty-eight P M.
Tony, hold second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, or if you oppose, no. Go ahead, Jacob. Let's just.
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Christina, blurt.
Aye.
Christine? Oh, she's said aye, but you can't hear her. Speak up. Oh, no. Dana?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Aye, uh, motion passes. We are adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.